Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, by way of introductions, we're going to do a little bit of a difference this evening. Present on the floor is Mr. Craig Pennington, our county planner, Mr. Leon Hughes, our director of planning and economic development, and the name just went out, our new... Please give me your name and position again. Brad Robinson, our zoning administrator. To my far right is Mr. Richard Williams, representing Western Carolina. To his left is Mr. George Weber, representing Madison. To my right, vice chair and representing Rudy Church. My name is Walt Schwartz. I represent the Bowling Green District. To my immediate left is Dr. Carol Horton, representing Port Royal. The chair on our far left, with heavy heart and a great deal of sadness, I must report that our representative from Matta Penai, Mr. Purcell Sylvester Minor Jr., passed away this past Friday, the 21st of this month. He leaves behind a wife, Brenda, of 48 years, two daughters, Sharanda and Felicia, two granddaughters whom he adored, one sister, four brothers, and a large host consisting of an aunt, an uncle, nieces, nephews, and cousins. I'm not going to belabor the point, but we have lost a very dear friend of ours. You have no idea the contributions that Mr. Minor made to this county over the many years until you read his obituary word. I was amazed at the impact he's had upon our community and the manner in which he has served. Mr. Young is related to Mr. Minor down the line by marriage. And there's an old saying that you can't pick your family because it's either by blood or marriage, but you can pick your friends. And I will tell you this much, I considered Purcell a friend as did each and every one of us on this commission did. He was a man of few words, but when he spoke, it was thoughtful and on point. And he will be sorely missed. Commissioners, does anyone else have anything they would briefly like to add?
I would like to say something. He was my vice chair, and I always called him the quiet bear because any time I would make a decision that I thought was correct, he'd always look at me and say, "Are you sure?" And I'll never forget that. God rest his soul.
I'd just like to add that Purcell and I were in county service many, many years together. Just it's a sudden passing, very surprised, and we greatly miss him. I won't miss him, I know.
Been knowing Purcell most of my life, and he was, as Mr. Schwartz said, he was a man of the community. He's got a lot of accolades. Just I haven't worked with him but the last couple of years here on the board, but it's going to be a major void. I can certainly say that. We solicit your prayers and your support, the family and the friends, and we thank you all for that.
All right, commissioners. There are no minutes available at this time for approval, so we will move into item one on our agenda, subdivisions. EX-02 2024 and SB-01 2024, F&amp;J Holdings LLC owner, Puffenbarger Forest applicant. Mr. Pennington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. First case tonight is EX-02 2024 for Puffenbarger subdivision. The applicant's requesting approval of an exception to the requirement for a construction of a VDOT road for a major subdivision. Major subdivision is defined as all subdivisions which are not classified as minor subdivision, including but not limited to subdivisions of three or more lots. Section 7-1 of the subdivision ordinance allows for the planning commission to grant an exception for this requirement for topographical reasons or other conditions peculiar to the site. The parcel to be subdivided currently contains two existing dwellings, a single-family dwelling and a family apartment. The applicant would like to subdivide the family apartment into a standalone parcel. The parcel has two existing driveway entrances off Farmer Drive and a private easement from Roy Brooks Lane. In order to meet the VDOT road requirement of a major subdivision, the road would have to be constructed from Roy Brooks Lane and as the road frontage at Farmer Drive is not large enough to accommodate a VDOT roadway. The applicant's requesting an exception to the VDOT road requirement for topographical reasons due to the wetlands that separate Roy Brooks Lane from the requested subdivided parcel. The two existing dwellings are served by an existing shared driveway from Farmer Drive. Should the exception be approved, both parcels would continue to be served via the existing shared driveway. VDOT will only accept a road when there are three parcels served and will not accept this road for maintenance if created. Staff suggests that this exception should be granted if, sorry, staff suggests that if this exception should be granted, any future subdivision of the property shall meet all major subdivision requirements excluding family subdivisions. All parcels shown on the plat are conforming lots of at least 10 acres and meet the requirements of the RP zoning district except for the road requirement. Should this exception be granted, a preliminary plat review is required as this constitutes a major subdivision. The plat meets all subdivision and zoning ordinance requirements. This concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, you have any questions? Not yet. Mr. Pennington, this is not going to have a significant impact on the county. In fact, while it will help aid and assist the Puffenbargers with what they want to do with the land, which is not expand it into additional housing, but it will just help with the roadway situation. Is that correct?
Correct. The parcel currently has two dwellings on this, on the existing parcel, and with this subdivision would separate the two dwellings and put one dwelling on each parcel in conjunction with the zoning ordinance. As stated, VDOT will not take a road with less than three residences on it. So if he did construct the VDOT road through the wetlands, then they would not maintain that road, and he would be responsible for maintaining that road that serves the two parcels.
All right, sir. Thank you. Commissioners, any further at this time? This is not going to require a public hearing, is it, Mr. Pennington?
No, sir. This does not require a public hearing. If you have any questions for the applicant, he is here, that he could answer any questions. That's it.
All right, sir. I don't have any additional questions unless the applicant would wish to address the issue. Feel free to come forward. If not. Okay. All right, commissioners. Is there a motion regarding this request?
I just want to clarify. So this one is the one that we're going to cut off or... So it's a total of... How many acres right now, like almost 200 or around 200?
It's, yes, 147, I believe. And this would be a 10-acre parcel that's cut out of the middle, separating the existing dwelling from the family apartment dwelling that you see to the north.
I've got 190 plus 10. So around 200.
Around 200.
A little over 200. So we're cutting off parcel A.
Cutting off parcel A.
Was this like, can this come under family subdivision?
No, ma'am. It's the property's in a LLC, and so a family subdivision cannot be performed.
That's right.
It's not changing the footprint, it's just changing a line. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is that a simplistic way of...
It would be pulling the 10-acre parcel out of the existing parcel.
Okay.
I understand.
Commissioners, any additional questions?
Mr. Pennington, you did say that there were wetlands, so they would be responsible for making it, I would ask, VDOT-ready, so to speak. Would have to be built by VDOT specs.
If he had to build the VDOT road, the hashed area on the screen right now shows all the wetlands, and the road would have to be constructed from Roy Brooks Lane due to the width. And so you can see the amount of wetlands that he would have to cross, bridge, or accomplish to get the road through.
Okay, and if we were to approve this, and for some reason financially it wasn't feasible, where do we go at that point?
So if this was approved, they could continue to use the shared entrance off of Farmer Drive. If it was disapproved, then to create the parcel, then he would have to build the VDOT road through Roy Brooks Lane and the wetlands to serve the two houses.
Thank you.
Any additional commissions? There being no additional questions, I'd like to make a motion that whereas exception request submitted appears to meet the requirements of the zoning and subdivision ordinance, I recommend that EX-02 2024 be approved as submitted.
Second.
Motion by the chair, seconded by the vice chair. Any further discussion? There being no additional discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, with that approval, this constitutes a preliminary plat, and so we would need a motion to approve the preliminary plat as long as it meets the rest of the county ordinance. This plat, as designed, meets the county subdivision ordinance and the county zoning ordinance, and so it'd be appropriate to make a motion at this time.
All right, sir. Commissioners, you have any questions regarding that?
It's being flat.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, that would be the preliminary plat that you were looking at.
I'd make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat as submitted.
Mr. Pennington, that would be SB-01 2024?
No, that would be SB-03 2024.
I got you. All right. Yes, because we have on our agenda, item 1A as being EX-02 2024, which we have just approved, and SB-01 2024.
Okay, I don't have my agenda, and so could I see your agenda?
Certainly.
That's 01, right beside the one.
Right. We proved this. We proved both of those together, didn't we? Okay.
All right, ladies and gentlemen and commissioners, SB-01 2024 is the correct numeration on it. So there is a motion by Mr. Weber.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Williams. Any further discussion? There being no additional discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is SB-02 2024. Mr. Pennington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Your next subdivision case is SB-02 2024 for Pendleton Section 18. The applicant's requesting preliminary plat approval for the next section of the Pendleton subdivision to be constructed. Page two of the plat that you have in your packet shows the location of Section 18 in relation to the overall layout of the Pendleton subdivision. Section 18 is highlighted in red on your screens. This plat will create 82 townhouse lots and be served by the existing subdivision roads through Section 9 and 10. The preliminary plat is consistent with the Caroline County zoning and subdivision ordinance and is a byright subdivision. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat at this time. This concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, any questions?
How many more houses is this next section?
82 townhouse lots.
82 townhouses?
Townhouses.
And these were all previously approved? This is a final plat?
A preliminary plat. But yes, all these lots were approved with the original rezoning of the Pendleton subdivision. All preliminary plats of each new section has to come to the planning commission for approval for them to move forward to the final plating stage. But all these lots were approved with the original rezoning.
Dr. Horton, anything?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other commissioner have a question or concern?
No, I have no concerns at all. I've been over there. There's a lot of dirt that's being moved around. I just think it's an extension to that existing facilities that are there. And I see no reason why we should stand in the way of this development. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, is there a motion regarding EX-02 2024? I'm sorry.
SB.
SB-02 2024.
I would make a motion, sir. I'd make a motion that we approve this SB-02 2024 as submitted and sent on to the Board of Supervisors with a motion for approval.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Weber, seconded by Mr. Young. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. This will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. All right, Mr. Pennington, if you would be so kind as to read the protocol for public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Purpose of a public hearing is for the Caroline County Planning Commission to listen carefully to the verbal expression and position and opinion of the citizens of Caroline County. Public hearings are not question-and-answer sessions or debates, and all statements should be addressed to the chair. When members of the public offer comment, they need to clearly state their name and voting district prior to making their comments. Applicants or representatives of the applicant will be allowed 15 minutes to introduce information regarding the matter advertised for public hearing. All comments are to be pertinent to the issue being considered. Persons speaking at public hearings are respectfully requested to keep comments brief, not to exceed three minutes, and to address only those issues pertinent to the matters advertised for public hearing. After the public hearing has been closed, the applicant or representatives of the applicant will be allowed 10 minutes to address any issues identified by the public.
Thank you, sir. And one quick question. Since these two text amendments are so closely related, I believe we can have a public hearing on both of them collectively, yet we still make a motion and vote on each one individually?
I could read them both together, and then you could have the public hearing. It would allow people six minutes to speak instead of three minutes to speak because it's two items, and then we would need two motions, but yes, we can do it that way.
All right, sir. For expedient reasons, we will read both at the same time and conduct a public hearing on both.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first public hearing tonight is TXT-02 2024. Staff has drafted a text amendment to add Section 2.1 Special Exception Uses and 2.1A Automated Vehicle Wash as a special exception use in the PSC Planned Shopping Center District. Currently, there is not an allowance for special exceptions in the PSC District. TX-02 2024, if adopted, will create Section 2.1 Special Exception Uses in the Planned Shopping Center District to allow for special exception uses. In addition, TXT-02 2024 will amend the PSC District's Section 2.1 to include automated vehicle wash as a special exception use. TXT-03 2024. Staff has provided a draft text amendment to remove vehicle wash from uses permitted by right in the B1 Business District and add vehicle wash as a special exception use in the B1 Business District.
Thank you. Public hearing for both of these text amendments is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on either or both of these text amendments? Anyone wishing to speak on either or both of these text amendments? Final call. Anyone wishing to speak on either or both of these text amendments, please come forward. Seeing no one coming forward, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners. Any additional questions from staff? There being no additional questions, is there a motion regarding text amendment 02 2024?
Mr. Chairman, where as a public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrant the approval of TXT-02 2024, I recommend that TXT-02 2024 be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors for a recommendation of approval.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Young, seconded by Dr. Horton and Mr. Weber both. Any additional discussion? There being no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion regarding TXT-02 2024 will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. TXT-03 2024.
Mr. Chair, where as the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice warrants the approval of TXT-03 2024, recommend that it be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Weber. Any additional discussion? There being no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. This will be forwarded with a recommendation of approval. SPEX-02 2023, New Earth, Virginia LLC owner applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Your first special exception request tonight, SPEX-10 2023, New Earth, Virginia. The applicant is requesting approval of a special exception permit to allow for rural, commercial, recreational use pursuant to Article 4, Section 5.19 of the Caroline County Zoning Ordinance. Rural, commercial, recreational use is defined as a private, fee-supported, indoor or outdoor activity which may include temporary overnight lodging and/or other structures where individuals take part in activities utilizing athletic training, mastered skills, innate or acquired talents with recreational supervision. A rural, commercial, recreational use must also meet those standards. A minimum acreage of two acres, onsite supervision of all activities, direct access to a Class 1 secondary road. The parcel shall be of size and shape appropriate for use and buffering, a site plan submitted, and should the special exception be approved and comply with the noise ordinance contained in Chapter 68 of the county code. The property to be utilized for rural, commercial, recreational use is identified as parcels 55-A-79, 55-A-79A, 55-A-80, and 70-A-13, located on Devil's Three-Jump Road and consists of 184 acres. The property is bounded by vacant rural preservation-owned land to the south, the Caroline Woodland Trail to the west, two residential parcels to the east, as well as the Brooks-Sutton subdivision. While included in the application, Parcell 79 and 80 do not have any improvements planned and are not planned to be utilized for the special exception as shown on the general development plan. The applicant would like to provide educational guidance for activities such as hiking, fishing, electric off-road vehicles such as ATVs, yoga, tracking classes, gardening, harvesting, meditation areas, and obstacle courses for team-building retreats. The programs would allow for one-day attendance or temporary overnight stays. The maximum stay allowed would be 30 days with the average stay being three to four days. Programs will be open for individual booking or groups to participate in team-building activities. The property would remain a working farm in compliance with the current rural preservation zoning and provide educational opportunities in learning about nature and survival skills. The hours of operation would be seasonal, and the facility would operate from sunrise to sunset. The facility would comply with the noise ordinance contained in Chapter 68 of the county code, and no mechanized noise would be generated. The structures proposed for the property are a tee house, five cabins for lodging, a glass house, two tiny homes, two hobbit houses, and five teepees. All structures are proposed to be screened and meet the minimum setbacks required with the RP zoning district. The structures utilized for lodging will each accommodate two guests, and the cabins will have individual bathrooms. The existing main dwelling will be used for classrooms, dining, and lodging. Approximately seven rooms will be available for overnight stays in the main house depending on the flex space layout. These rooms will also accommodate two persons for overnight stays. There is a second dwelling located on the property previously used as a farmhand tenant structure that will be utilized as staff quarters for the facility. The GDP shows the lavender fields orchid, sorry, orchard and vegetable gardens that will be used for various activities such as soap production and meal preparation. There's a pool associated with the main house that will be used for activities also. The described use will meet all zoning setback and height requirements. No noise or air quality impacts will be produced, and all activities taking place on the property are consistent with the rural preservation zoning district. The proposed use meets the special exception standards set forth in the Caroline County zoning ordinance. VDOT has requested a turn lane warrant analysis that the applicant has submitted. Should the use warrant a turn lane, one will be constructed with the site plan. VDOT has stated that the entrance will need to be shifted to accommodate site distance. The applicant has provided an engineer plan that allows for the shifting of the entrance if approved. The Virginia Health Department has commented on the usage of the property and can permit the activities requested. The comprehensive plan designates this area as rural preservation. Rural, commercial, recreational use is permitted use with approval of a special exception in the RP zoning district. Staff's suggested conditions, should this application be approved, are as follows. The two will be recorded with the clerk of the circuit court. The applicant shall install all entrance improvements as required by VDOT. All noise shall comply with Chapter 68 of the Caroline County Code. A registry shall be kept and provided to the Caroline County Planning Department on an annual basis or upon request. Guests shall not arrive prior to 7:00 a.m. Hours of operation shall be 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. as daylight. Hours of operation shall be seven AM to nine PM as daylight allows. The maximum number of guests at the facility shall be ninety. Maximum number of guests allowed for overnight stays shall be fifty. The parking area shall be designed in accordance with Article thirteen of the Caroline County zoning ordinance. All structures shall be wholly screened from neighboring properties and Devil's Three Jump Road, and all activities shall be supervised at all time. And that concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
We may call you back, Mr. unless you have.
This is the property we visited last year, right?
Yes. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm representing Oya New Earth and had a presentation as well that I can prepare although there's some or that I can present, but there's some redundancy. But I'd be happy to uh
And and you are?
My name is Garrett Bating and I'm.
Garrett Bates?
Uh, Bating.
Bate.
Bating, yep.
Batty.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, and I'm helping represent Oya New Earth in this development process. Perfect. So I'd like to thank everyone for being here and taking the time to hear about this project this evening. I'm really excited to get started. This product's been in the works for a few years and I think that the matter of establishing alignment between understanding of exactly what we're attempting to do, I think it'll be make it clear that it's a no-brainer. I think it's a win-win for the county. And I think it really preserves the spirit of Caroline County of a rural and peaceful environment that without, you know, adding noise and traffic to a property. Um, so this is a drone shot of the existing property that I believe most of the members have visited. I'm just gonna go through. So our goal for this property is to have a sanctuary for all. Um, we believe fundamentally that land holds the power to heal. And Caroline County with its rolling hills, lush forests, and serene ambience offers a perfect backdrop for a transformative retreat experience. Uh, we aim to provide flexible multi-use space where individuals can rejuvenate their minds, bodies, and spirits through a variety of wellness practices, nature-based therapies, and community activities. Uh, we have one hundred eighty-four acres of land and our parcel is located off of Devil's Three Jump Road. Um, it has uh, the majority of it is forested and it has a pond, uh, you know, pool, there's solar rays and some existing uh, buildings, a large manor house and uh, some existing farm dwellings as well. And um, our intention is to add additional alternative structures, uh, you know, common flex spaces, tiny houses, modern cabins, and sustainable structures. So that, uh, you know, and I think wrestling, you know, nestling those in this environment will create a, you know, an environment that really leads for transformation, really sets the scene for people to make impactful change in their lives. Um, so we'll speed this up a little bit. We're gonna have, you know, the the goal is, and so I guess a little bit about Oya New Earth. We have other facilities that have been developed as well where this is the first rodeo. We have a functional facility in the Dominican Republic as well as one that's underway in New York and a few more to come as well. Primarily, we are opening these up as uh flexible use spaces for yoga teachers, yoga practitioners. And with the idea that, and you know, we have a pretty large demand that teachers will come from all over and want to use these spaces and that once we develop, you know, luxury accommodations and and really set the scene for these retreats. Yes, in addition to yoga and mindful meditation, there'll be, you know, nature-based therapies, uh, you know, guided hiking, uh, forest bathing, uh, and other other nature-based therapies as well. Uh, we with that pond, we've planned to utilize paddleboard yoga. We have um, a large list of signed letters of intent from yoga practitioners that want to come to this facility. Um, you know, fishing, leisure, relaxation. Um, so the existing accommodations, like as I mentioned, manor house, guest house, there's a pond, swimming pool, solar rays, and what we intend to do is add uh, a few sustainable alternative structures, you know, following building codes um, and in order to host additional guests and create a retreat experience. Uh, these are um, some of the alternative shelters that we have in mind. The details will be laid out in more detail in the planning, state and design stage, but these are established tiny homes, uh, by known builders that have plans for the the first two dwellings. Um, and then uh, there's also some some alternatives of the hobbit houses and the clamping teepees as well. Um, and again, we would iron out, you know, the details in the planning and zoning. Um, we also intend, there's a barn on the facility. We intend to convert that into a flexible use space primarily as a yoga studio. Um, but, you know, having the ability to have catered, you know, meals, things like that. Uh, we have no plans, while there's uh, organic vegetable gardens and things like that, we have no plans to operate a commercial kitchen or provide food, any type of food that would be brought in, uh, would be catered. Um, that's a drone shot of the existing solar rays. Um, and so, you know, a big part of our philosophy is uh, to be good stewards of this planet and protect our ecosystems through renewable energy, you know, sustainable, organic gardening. And we intend to have lavender fields and, you know, the gardens to be a beautiful spectacle for people to get, you know, wander and relax into. Additionally, we have an extent, a network of trails that go through the woods there and we have uh state-of-the-art electric ATVs onsite that are um, very, very unique and we'd like to be able to provide um, guided excursions and uh, take um, all different types of communities through through the the woods there and educate about local flora fauna. And uh, and really, you know, it's a flexible, open use there. Um, so additionally, uh, yeah, we want to have educational workshops. We have a lot of different teachers that want to, you know, put on, whether it's a mindfulness workshop or, you know, you name it, soap making. We want to basically have it, you know, that the flexibility in that space that we can host uh, different events in that, under that rural recreational uh, use and in uh, yeah, we've been engaging uh, local communities um, as well, local scouts groups and and we'd again, we'd want to be partnering with the community as much as possible um, to have an event space that can be used um, in that way. Um, we've been, uh, we have a signed letter of intent from livability uh, or Virginia Livability, which is a uh, accessibility nonprofit. And our intention would be to have accessible uh, use facilities as well um, so that we can open up that outlet to the community and, uh, you know, curate to those in our community with disabilities as well. Um, this is a, a note from the founders. Mine is here today and it's really his passion, his vision to create these facilities to um, show a way of life that emanates through uh, that, you know, transcends culture. Um, the goal is for people to really see how to live holistically and, uh, you know, have an experience away from their daily lives that they take into their daily lives in this retreat setting. And uh, and yeah, he's very passionate about it, something he believes fully and I share that vision as well. And this is a, and this is a kind of the purpose behind our mission here. Um, again, I know that, um, yeah, so we have a lot of strategic partnerships and one of the uh, key partnerships um, that we intend to continue to develop is the the Wounded Warriors Retreat Center in Caroline County. Uh, you know, has various events and our goal would be, you know, as a to balance out the uh, well, to basically provide events as well so that for for couples where if there's a, you know, a veteran soldier and uh, wife that's more, you know, vice versa, not gender-specific that uh, wants to come to Caroline County, that we're basically creating a sister uh, community to be able to like co-sponsor events for, you know, couples and families that uh, want to come to Caroline County and uh, use these retreat facilities. So there's, you know, a few main reasons why we really want to push for this. I think that uh this thoughtfully designed retreat center uh, fundamentally maintains the rural spirit and quiet nature of Caroline County. And by adding a few more shelters, I think we really maintain um, this spirit in contrast to, you know, busy housing development or something uh, of that nature. We intend for this project during construction phase, uh, as well as the operations, minus to add fifty local jobs. As well as, uh, we've estimated with a nightly rate of around a hundred fifty dollars and a seventy-five percent occupancy rate with a five percent uh, tax, we'll see something like fifty-one thousand dollars of tax revenue to Caroline County per year. Um, and when you increase, when you take into account the increased property value, uh, we, you know, we're looking for on the low end to see something like a million dollars of tax revenue be brought into Caroline County from this project uh, over the next ten years. So we think it's a, you know, a strong asset to the community in that way. Yeah, we yeah, by seamlessly uh, blending innovative wellness programs, cutting-edge sustainable practices, and deep community engagement, Oya New Earth is poised to become a recognized leader of the holistic wellness movement. And this is a call to action. We want to know, are you willing to support that cause? And uh, I'm here to answer any questions, to create alignment and the vision and make sure this is a win-win for Caroline County. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Bartlett at this time?
This is the same company we've been working with or?
I believe at the time we dealt with it, it was New Earth, Virginia, if I am not incorrect.
That's, that's correct. And I've taken over for Jordan Duquette, who is helping lead the project.
Mr. Duquette appeared before several times.
Yep.
Did he say he's taken over for?
That's correct.
Yep, Mr. Duquette has moved to California. Commissioners, if there are no additional questions at this time, I would like to open.
I got it. I've got quite a few.
We're gonna come back to it.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I would like to open the public hearing on this matter. At the end of the public hearing, Mr. Bartlett will have uh, a period of time to reply to any concerns. And uh, we can go into a question and answer mode at that time if that's agreeable. Thank you, Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you.
It is Bartlett.
It's a Bating.
Batty.
Bating, B A D I N G.
Sorry about that.
Hey, it's all good. Thank you.
Our latest gentleman, public hearing regarding SPEX one zero twenty twenty three is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter? Please come forward. Please state your name and your voting district, not your address.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Wagner from the Bowling Green District. Uh, one thing I'd recommend, I saw the conditions from the Planning and Building Department and uh, I didn't know previously, of course, you all know I just retired, that they plan on using the main house for some of these events and of course, we issued a certificate of occupancy as a single-family dwelling for the Nickams uh, house there. So I would recommend in the conditions that you put uh, require that they get a change of use permit because there are some life safety issues that would need to be addressed before you open that to the general public in lieu of a single-family dwelling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitman. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward. Anyone else wishing to speak regarding this matter? Last call. Anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, public hearing is now closed. Mr. Bating, if you would please come back up.
Can we ask Mr. Pendon can the change of, the question on the change of use? Does that automatically change if if this is approved or do we need to?
Uh, no. So if it's approved, then we would have to go through the site plan process um, to approve a minor site plan or major site plan. And uh, use certificate, uh, change of use permit would have to be um, applied for and issued at that time.
That's done at that time.
Yes, if it were approved as a special exception, it would become a commercial property.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, I don't know exactly how to say this because I don't want to be derogatory to anybody. My concern is that all of the information that's being submitted to us is almost like, I'll use an expression, wishful thinking. And I don't know how we as commissioners can decide whether or not all of these wonderful things that you put up, and I'm not saying any of it's wrong, I'm not saying you're lying to me, I'm just but I am concerned, how do we? How do we as commissioners review the how can we guarantee? How can we guarantee to the county and the people in that area that all of these wonderful things can actually be accomplished? That's what I have to say.
I don't think we can. However, Mr. Bating, uh, if you wish to address that point of concern.
Sure. Um, yeah, and I also understand where you're coming from. I think you can see, uh, you know, when a vision is uh almost utopian, it almost can seem uh, like a, like something of fantasy. But the reality is we have already demonstrated and executed this um, vision and uh, elsewhere in the Dominican Republic, we have functional facilities uh, as well as I'm myself am also involved in it and uh, I've personally led and built two billion dollars in infrastructure projects in Virginia alone, electrical uh, transmission line and largely solar projects in Virginia. So I have a history of being able to execute.
I was not asking about your ability to construct something.
Yep.
I'm asking your ability to make the commitment that all of these things that you are suggesting here, how can we guarantee to Caroline County and the people in that neighborhood that all of these facilities are being done as you have stated?
Is the question specifically about the construction of the dwellings or is it more the community outreach and programs that you'd want to see broken down into additional detail?
You stated you have additional locations?
Correct. There's a, we have a functional facility in the Dominican Republic and it's online.
Oh, Dominican Republic. Uh, which one of you commissioners is gonna fly to the Dominican Republic to check it out?
I'll go tomorrow.
He's going tomorrow.
There you go.
I'm sorry.
Can we do a site visit?
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking. I'm sorry. Man, I'm not, not trying to abuse you at all. I just think a lot of this sounds very good and um, I appreciate the effort to try and accomplish these things. What I do not know is how do I? What I do not know is how do I or the commissioners guarantee to the community that these facilities are living up to what you have stated will actually happen? That's my question.
I think it would be the same way as a facility where, is it called Wounded Warriors? I mean, it's a similar type place, but it's for, you know, veterans. And then it used to be like a place for weight loss.
Are you speaking of uh wound, uh Warrior's Heart?
Warrior's Heart, the place that is, Mr. Pendleton knows what I'm talking about. I don't know what it's called right now. And it was also a Hindu uh relaxation facility at one point. So I think there were some type of inspections and some type of agreements with the county. I mean, I'd have to go back through all that paperwork. But when we approved two of those, I was on the.
I appreciate that, Carol. See, like I say, you're catching on to what I'm, the question I'm asking, okay? Um, we as commissioners have to be able to say to the people of the county and the board of supervisors, gentlemen, we've looked into this and this meets all of the restrictions that we want to do. Without some kind of guarantee, I think we're we're kind of guessing at what's gonna happen.
Yeah, which we probably were with the other facilities too. So we do have to, you know, follow up the same way we did with those. I remember the public hearing on this before, we had a few people come forward and say they were for it because they want that property kept rural and beautified. So um, I mean, from my visitation and what I've heard over the past, I think we've been working on this for a couple of years. I, you know, I see a lot of good in it. But I, you know, I believe you're right, Mr. Weber, you know, things would have to be in place where, just like any other business, we have to follow through and make sure it's done. That, that would be, staff would have a plan for that.
Could we, uh, I'm sorry, Craig. I think what I'm stating and, and I think Carol's picking up on it, um, I think we need more than just a description by this applicant. I would like to see some things in, in black and white that we as commissioners can say, okay, that question's answered, that question's answered, that question's answered. Okay, we only have one question left. I think that's what I'm asking for.
Dr. Horton, just to clarify, th- there is a separate distinction. Warrior's Heart is a treatment facility for veterans and active-duty military as well as first responders who have a substance abuse or alcohol problem.
Yes.
PTSD, mild traumatic brain injury. Uh, so while similar in nature uh as to the facilities, they're an entirely different program.
I would say this one's more similar to when it, when um that facility was some type of, it was some type of weight loss place where they had horseback riding trails. And then it's also been, uh, it was some type of private Hindu um relaxation place.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sorry, Mr. Weber.
I think there are a lot of questions that have to be answered beyond what we're just discussing right now. Mr. Pendleton, I wasn't stepping on your toes. I just, I think as a planner, I would ask that we defer this for the next thirty days to be able to.
Yeah.
Ask some more questions.
Can you hold that motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Mr. Bading.
Yes, sir.
The owners of uh Oye New Earth, are they the same owners that were of New Earth, Virginia?
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, but, but I've taken over the project over the last, uh, last month.
Because I remember very well going through this process before with Mr. Duquette. And I remember the paperwork that was submitted to us. There was a doc, they, they were touting uh that they were going to have an onsite physician. That physician turned out to be, and nothing against octogenarians, but it was, uh, I think it was about an eighty-four-year-old retired gynecologist who was no longer licensed in the state of Virginia, who was, who, who had never been licensed in the state of Virginia and whose license in the state of New York was no longer valid. So they were touting him as their forefront medical authority. They were also going to be doing uh blood draws onsite and have the blood work processed offsite. Uh, they were going to grow hemp. And I think that's the reason probably for the wonderful aromatic lavender fields trying to grow, trying to overcome the odor of the hemp. Now, there's nothing illegal about growing hemp. There's nothing illegal about processing the oil out of it uh for the use in CBD oil. But don't try to shove something to me on one front when you're covering up something else on the other. And I took it as a personal affront when they touted that physician. That was a deliberate misleading approach and it left a very sour taste in my mouth. Now, I am not a politician, so I don't have to worry about garnering votes. In fact, there's times when Mr. McKenzie, our county attorney who was here, sometimes I make him cringe in his seat. But that's okay. But I just want you to know this project in its entirety, even on its face value right now, I'm still not over that. And I think that there is a lot more that needs to be gone into. For example, water and sewer to these tiny houses, uh, to the cabins. Not only that, but let, let me jump to something else that pops into my mind. A maximum of a thirty-day stay. And then they have to check out, just like you would in a motel room. You check out. Well, what's to prevent me from staying in a tiny house for thirty days, checking out and then checking immediately into a hobbit house? There's absolutely nothing because on paper, it shows I left the tiny house. The very next day, I checked in to the hobbit house. So I'm still on premises. And there are just too many loose ends for me, to be quite honest with you and upfront.
Understood. And I think I can address uh most of those. And I, yeah, I think I would be remiss if those concerns of the past were not brought up. Um, over the course of the project, you know, the idea has been shifted and molded. And the reality is that, uh, you know, wellness versus Western established medicine and medical doctors is uh, there's a, a hard line there and there should be. And so in the past, you know, if that line was blurred by others, that is a mistake. But uh, you know, we have remedied that. And under no circumstances are we saying that we're a medical facility. We're a wellness facility in the same way that a, a yoga studio is not a physical therapist's office. And so I, I want to make sure that that distinction is extremely clear and we're not going to be uh doing medical practices at this facility outside of, you know, wow, yoga and uh other wellness practices, meditation. Additionally, um, you know, I know in the past there was talks about composting toilets, there's talks about rainwater collections and other things that would raise flags to Department of Health. Absolutely not. We're not going to do anything that would, uh, you know, raise those concerns to uh address the septic and wells. Um, we would be adding additional septic and wells. And while the specific locations for these systems have been identified on that drawing, uh, we have not yet conducted the necessary percolation tests or detailed hydrological studies. However, these tests and studies will be completed as part of the design phase, which is typical. And uh we are committed to submitting the results to relevant authorities for review and approval. We'll full, we plan to fully comply with all regulatory requirements and will uh take any necessary mitigation measures. You know, based on these findings to ensure that environmental and community standards are being met.
A- and I appreciate that, sir. A- and I realize you're just the, the point man, so you're, you're catching the brunt of it. Uh, but I, I, I go back to this. New Earth, Virginia, and the owners uh in New York, wherever they were, they, in my opinion, they tried to pull the wool over our eyes once before. And, you know, any validating statements that you make and presentations that you make, I'm, I view with a very suspect eye. And I'm just gonna be very honest and upfront with you about it.
I can, I can absolutely understand that. And uh, you know, that's why I'm here. My, my goal is to create absolute transparency. And that's all I, I, you know, I don't have anything to hide. And I want to make sure that um any concerns that you have uh that we're alleviating, you know, there won't be, there will not be composting toilets and uh, you know, human who are going on to vegetable gardens being served to people that's, you know, I understand that uh, you know, whatever has been said in the past is I want to turn over a new leaf and let you know that I'm not gonna go there. It's not, that's not part of the design. We're not, we're going to have this um be designed properly where there's not health risks to the public.
Mr. Chairman, I.
Yes, sir, Mr. Young.
Mr. Bading, um, you know, this is an extremely gorgeous facility. Um, it's the residential is residential as our former uh building official spoke to, spoke about. Property is amazing. To have it transform the home that because it's uh has a CO on it now, to have it transform into what you want is gonna be some requirements, some major renovations and requirements structurally and a few other things. You mentioned blurred lines. I feel as that's what, I feel as though that's what we have appears blurred lines, based upon what Mr. Chairman has already shared. Uh, my question to you is, um, do you have any license to operate on the property as of now?
You know, operating in which, I think like a business license?
You said you have a business license?
No, I'm asking, is that what you mean, like?
Or any type of license? What license do you have to operate on the property?
Oh, oh, upon uh, we would, we would get a business license within Caroline County would be the, the first uh step. And additionally, um, for these remodels where we're pulling buil- building permits, you know, these are all, where these are gonna be engineered plan sets that are stamped off on. Um, to address the public comment earlier, uh, the uh manor house there has seven bedrooms and our plan is to uh remodel and renovate so that the uh bottom floor that has two bedrooms will be flex spaces for storage and/or uh staff, uh guests. How uh, uh, facilities in the upper five bedrooms will all be converted into uh, you know, similar to any hotel or uh bed and breakfast where there'll be additional uh bathrooms added to those, to those rooms to support uh guests and.
Okay, thank you. Um, and previously, and what I see on my application, on my packet here is New Earth. And what is the name of your company now?
It's Oya New Earth.
Oya?
Yes, correct. Yeah, O Y A, Oya, New Earth.
New Air?
New Earth.
Okay. So are you familiar with Morgan's uh Manor?
I'm not.
You're not?
Is, I mean, unless you're referring to the manor house on the property.
Okay. You have a, had a beautiful photo up here of the property and you showed how gorgeous it looks.
Yep.
Well, I have some documentation here that shows me Obsidian's view at Morgan's Manor. You're doing a event there this weekend?
That is not correct. So, yeah, and I know that.
It's advertised.
Yeah, so I, and I, I have text messages. I know that we'd been in contact um with Pam, but I, so what had happened was, and you know, not to, to spin this the correct way or, or the best way possible. I think that the reality is, is there is public uh support and a conversation was had to a local photography studio about, hey, is, are you going to house weddings there? And, and there is a, a preliminary discussion. Um, and then uh that individual scheduled an event that was not, uh, you know, coordinated with I and New Earth, it was not signed off on, it was not agreed upon. So when that was uh addressed, we, you know, I can read off the, the course, the discussion that was had, but um.
It's not necessary.
Yeah.
I just see.
It was a misunderstanding.
I didn't see it as being canceled. I didn't see it as a cancel event. First of all, um, I have a major concern with coming into the county, thinking that individuals can do what they want to do, how they want to do it without licensing. You indicated how much money is gonna be coming back to the county. Uh, you all, you all have booked three events this weekend, July the thirteenth, fourteenth, August the eleventh.
These, these.
Let me finish.
Okay.
Three hundred and fifty dollars a night. I sure wish I could get that. Um, how much money of that would go to the county if it's unlicensed? Um, it just appears to me, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but it appears to me, again, these blurred lines, you guys have come to us on several occasions, um, saying one thing and wanting to do another. And this is a clear indication of not wanting to be in compliance, even if we were to approve this.
Again, do, do address those concerns, those, uh, you know, the, there are no events that are planned at the facility. Those were done by private citizens who, who are Caroline County residents that are not employees of Oya New Earth. They were not signed off on, they were not, you know, agreed upon. It was someone taking initiative when they should not have. And they have since, you know, rescinded that in, in writing, which I can show you. And we're apologetic for the miscommunication and uh, and, you know.
Yeah.
I, all of that information, all, you know, this confusion is kind of weird. The project has changed hands and it's changed hands from, you know, an early stage where the idea was being developed to a
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. But I mean, again, this individual is saying, I want to throw a, end of the summer party. This individual is ac- asking for bartenders. So you're gonna be serving alcohol. Have you talked to the sheriff's department? Or have you even applied with ABC to get a license? Again, you can't get a license if you're, don't have a permit, a business license here in the county. So again, I just have a lot of major concerns with this.
Agreed. And those, I can validate those concerns. And I, again, there are no events occurring at the facility. Those, you know, invitations were premature. I think they were optimistic that, that, you know, this would be approved. And ultimately, uh, we fully respect the opinion of the board. Uh, we want to make sure that you guys feel absolutely comfortable with it. I want to open up full transparency uh so that there's no concerns. And, you know, any, you know, all licenses, you know, from engineers, business licenses, we're going to do this thing by the book. It's, we're not operating in shadows. We're not trying to pull wool over anyone's eyes.
I want to make sure that I understand correctly, sir. Someone was planning a ticketed event on your property without prior consent from you and without your prior knowledge. Is that what you're telling us?
That's correct.
I have no further.
Do you want to make a motion, Mr. Weber?
Mr. Weber, if you don't mind, sir, may I make a different motion?
Well, um, having listened to all of this, I think we're going around in circles, ladies and gentlemen. I would definitely make a motion to defer this at this time for at least thirty days. But I think, based on everything I'm listening to, I think I would make a motion to deny this application.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weber, seconded by Mr. Young to deny special exemption, one zero twenty twenty-three. Is there any further discussion?
I, I mean.
Yes.
I, I understand where we're going with this, but this is the first time that I've heard something about events being scheduled on the property. You know, prior to it being approved, I'd, I'd like to look at, a chance to look into that a little bit. But maybe if you all have looked into it already, I, I haven't. So that's the only reason I wouldn't go with that right now.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. It has been seconded. All those in favor of recommending denial signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
All right. There will be a roll call vote. Mr. Williams, how say you?
I just can't buy it. Learning, learning this information right now, I mean, I would definitely be a no.
The motion is for denial?
For denial.
So you vote for denial?
Denial.
Mr. Weber?
I vote for denial.
Mr. Young?
Denial.
And I vote for denial. Dr. Horton?
A nay. And, and I would like to see all of that, because y'all know I just came back off of vacation.
I, I would, I would also like to see that, that documentation. Again, I've, you know, I've only been associated with this project for the last month, but these, all of this advertisement, all, any of these agreements were made prior by someone who's no longer with this company. And so, so, you, you know, this, I have no record of any of th- these events that were being planned. There are no events go- going to occur, and again, we're, I'm happy to-
This is a different company. It's not the same company as yours, but they're saying that they own the property.
Well-
Same people own the property, sir.
Yeah, with the same pictures and everything else online.
Have you purchased the property?
No, but Obsidian View does not own the property either, whoever that is advertising.
I mean, this, I, I'm not saying that y'all are wrong. I'm just saying, this is social media, and I want to know what's going on here before I make my decision. But, well, this is social media. I want, yeah, I, I mean, I used to be in journalism and education. I need the fact.
Respect that.
But, yeah, I understand where you're, I am, yeah, I understand where you're coming from. Can I keep this copy?
Absolutely.
All right, thanks.
All right. Regarding the motion, it is passed for denial four to one. This recommendation will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of denial. Thank you, Mr. Bating. Like I say, you're the point man. You're catching the brunt of it, so nothing personal, sir. All right, moving on. Let's take about a ten minute break. We'll be in recess for ten minutes. Meeting will please come to order again.
Mr. Pennington, SPEX 04 2024, if you please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Second special exception tonight is SPEX 04 2024, Barnes at Matapanai. The applicant is requesting an amendment to SPEX 18 2021 in order to increase the acreage of the special exception and to amend the conditions of the previously approved special exception permit for a special events facility. In September of 2020, the Board of Supervisors approved SPEX 06 2019 for a special events facility located at 23134 Panola Road with an event barn, tent area, and parking. In March of 2022, the board approved SPEX 18 2021, which repealed and replaced the previous special exception, expanding the area for the special events facility to 6.2 acres, which added a second event barn, two bathhouses, and an event preparation area listed as a carriage house. Single-family dwelling, which was under construction at the time, was not included in the special exception request. This request will expand the area for the special exception, special events facility to 24.5 acres. The increase in acreage would expand the special exception envelope towards the road frontage on Panola Road and to the rear of the currently approved area. The house that was previously under construction has been completed and is not included in this special exception request. No further improvements of the property are planned at this time. The special events area designated on the general development plan identifies the location of all activities associated with the special events facility. All parking is located behind the crest of the hill on the property and is not visible from Panola Road. The GDP shows three barns with ceremony seating in front of the southernmost barn, carriage house used for preparation, and two bathhouses with existing drain fields. The subject property contains approximately 125 acres and is bordered by the Matapanai Springs Golf Course to the northwest and residential properties on the remaining borders. A map created by staff identifies adjacent residential structures and approximate distances to the proposed facility. The closest residential structure is approximately 688 feet from the closest event barn, and the closest residential structure from the northernmost event barn is approximately 1569 feet. The comprehensive plan designates this area as agricultural preservation. There is very little land zoned agricultural preservation, and rural preservation is a predominant zoning designation for agricultural activities. While special event facilities are not permitted in the AP zoning district, they are allowed by special exception in the RP zoning district. Panola Road is a rural local road. The current average daily traffic count for Panola Road is 523 vehicles per day. Between 2013 and 2019, there were 14 accidents on Panola Road. Between 2019 and 2024, there were 13 accidents on Panola Road, none involving alcohol and one DUI that did not involve an accident. This data was received from V dot traffic analysis. V dot comments were addressed on the previous application regarding the installation of a commercial entrance, which has been installed. The applicant has applied for a drain field modification permit with Virginia Health Department for existing drain fields, but has been notified by the Virginia Health Department that any open-to-the-public events held at the facility would require portable bathroom facilities, and the existing bathrooms would not be able to be used for these types of events. The following are the applicant's requested changes to the existing conditions for the approved special events facility. The applicant's requests are shown in red, while staff comments are shown in blue. Black text is existing conditions that are to remain. Excuse me. Conditions 1 through 3, no changes are requested. Condition 4 currently reads, "All noise sounds shall comply with Chapter 68 of the Caroline County Code, including the maximum DBA limits established for the Rural Preservation Zoning District, which shall not exceed, which shall not be exceeded." Staff suggested this condition remain, even though if removed, Chapter 68 would still apply. No changes requested to condition number 5. Condition 6 reads, "The special exception shall be limited to weddings, receptions, birthday parties, anniversary parties, business meetings, and similar events. No ticketed events shall be permitted." Staff supports the removal of this condition, as festivals and ticketed events will be governed by the Festivals and Special Event Chapter of the County Code. No change is requested for condition 7. Condition 8 reads, "All delivery and removal of food, tents, chairs, supplies, and other event services shall occur between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m." Staff supports the removal of this condition, as it has not been included with recent special event facility approvals. The applicant's requesting a change to condition 9 that would allow the facility to open one hour earlier than previously approved at 8:00 a.m. instead of 9:00 a.m. and to close one hour later on Sundays at 9:00 p.m. No change is requested for condition 10. Condition 11 reads, "Overnight parking of motor recreational vehicles and/or accommodations shall be prohibited." Staff supports removal of this condition, as it has been removed from recent special events facility approvals. Condition 12, "Any exterior lighting used to illuminate the event facility shall be source shielded and downward facing so as not to exceed .5-foot candles at the venue boundary." Staff suggested this condition remain, as it is a requirement in other sections of the zoning ordinance for commercially used properties to keep lighting source shielded and downward facing and not to exceed .5-foot candles at the property lines. Also, this requirement maintains the rural character of the area. No change is requested to conditions 13 and 14. Condition 15 reads, "The holder of this permit shall ensure that all proper licenses are obtained regarding alcoholic beverages." Staff suggested this condition remain. Condition 16 requested changes are to increase the number of events from 1 to 150 from 70, and to strike the language multi-day events shall be considered as one event for each day of the multi-day event. Staff is acceptable to this change. No change is requested for condition 18. Condition 19 requested change is to amend the number of attendees to 250. Staff is acceptable to this change, as any public event with less than 300 attendees does not require a festival or special event permit application under Chapter 49 of the County Code. No change is requested for condition 20. Condition 21 read, "Minor site plan in accordance with Article 15, Section 14 of the Caroline County zoning order shall be submitted and approved to the county." Staff supports the removal of this condition, as no improvements are planned, and a minor site plan would not be required. No change is requested to 22. Condition 22, 23, "The applicant shall install the required V dot entrance improvements based upon the number of events approved by the Board of Supervisors." Staff suggests the removal of this condition, as a requirement has already been met. Condition 24, "Permit shall be reviewed by the Board of Supervisors from the date of issuance of the certificate of occupancy in year 1, year 2, year 5, and then every five years." Staff suggests this condition be revised, as year 1 and year 2 reviews have already occurred. Staff's suggestion for the new condition is this permit shall be reviewed by the Board of Supervisors two years from the date of the approval of this special exception request. Condition 25 reads, "Only one event may take place at any given time." Staff supports the removal of this condition, as multiple events may be held at the same time under Chapter 49 of the County Code governing special events. Staff suggests one new condition to be placed on the facility that reads, "The applicant shall provide a noise and vibration study to the planning department prior to any activity taking place that will utilize outdoor amplified sound." This concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Pennington, I'll start the ball rolling, I guess. There was something pertaining to how close to the roadway that, I guess, let's say it's an arts and crafts fair. I believe the applicant was asking for a distance of 50 feet from the roadway.
The special exception envelope shown on the general development plan, excuse me, ranges from approximately 50 to 75 to 100 feet off of the roadway. The setbacks for the Rural Preservation Zoning District is 175 feet, and so the special exception envelope should be moved back to 175 feet from the property, from the front property line.
All right, so is that contained in the suggested conditions or changes?
No, it's not a condition. That should be changed prior to any approval.
All right, sir, thank you. All right, commissioners, you have any questions?
I had a question on number 23. So there's already a V dot entrance, V dot approved entrance. So if, if the facility expands and has another entrance, how does removing this number 23 affect? Because shouldn't another entrance also be V dot approved?
If they were going to do another entrance, then it would need to be V dot approved for commercial access. There's no plans for a new entrance at this time. And should they apply for a new entrance with V dot, then V dot would look at it as a commercial entrance.
So it doesn't affect, removing 23 doesn't affect?
No, because the current entrance that is there has been improved to a commercial entrance, and if they were to apply for a new entrance, they have to apply to V dot, and V dot would look at it as a commercial entrance.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any further questions of Mr. Pennington at this time? The applicant or his representative, I'm sure, is going to want to speak. Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Mr. Olaf, good evening.
Good evening, good evening, members. I would phrase this, what we're doing, just a little bit differently. Every 90% of what we are asking for has been given to other venues. For example, I was here when Magnolia Field, when Sean, Mr. Sullivan and his wife presented their proposals. 90% of what we're asking for is identical to what was given to Magnolia Fields and other venues with the concept that was discussed, I believe, at the Planning Commission meeting to sort of level the playing field, make sure all venues can have the same opportunities and can compete fairly. The only difference of what we're asking for than what was given to the other venues are the number of people, the attendees. We can, we're now asking to have up to 250 people. Magnolia Fields was limited, or I only asked for 150. Their barn is much smaller. Mulberry Place was given 300 people. Again, they've got a very, very large, very, very large facility. And then the other change is, because we have so much space, we want to expand the entire venue area, and we have no problem with, was mentioned, with staff of having the 175-foot setback off of Panola Road.
So you would have no difficulty with the 175-foot setback?
No, we fully understand the need for that.
Thank you.
And the reason we wanted to expand the venue area is that particularly with weddings, it really, it really surprises me. We think we have a relatively large area defined, but some wedding parties, to my, to my surprise, literally want to go down in the hayfields for photography and other reasons, and we don't, never want to be in the position of saying, wait a minute, you're now going outside of our permitted venue area and creating unnecessary difficulties. The other thing that we've seen, opportunities are arising for us that we never anticipated. Perhaps the largest one, as I think you know, we were selected by public television to film seasons 1 and 2 of The Great American Recipe, which is a national public television show. We would never have imagined that that was one of the things that was possible. We've been approached by several groups to do craft fairs. We've been approached by one group to do a jazz festival. Now, until this change occurs, we wouldn't be able to do that, and we told them we're not capable of doing it. So our point is, we can't anticipate every single opportunity that's going to arise in the future, so we want to try to get, without overreaching, a sufficiently large area to take advantage of every opportunity that we can. But again, the bulk of what we're asking for in hours of operation, number of events, opening and closing times is identical to what's been given to the other venues that I mentioned.
Commissioners, any further questions at this time? Thank you, Mr. Olaf, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Y'all like to make a comment, though?
All right, we're going to conduct a public hearing.
We'll make it.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we're going to open a public hearing regarding special exception 04 2024. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak regarding this matter? Please come forward and state your name and your voting district, please.
My name is Albert J. Lilly, Jr. I'm here with my wife, Judith G. Lilly. Voting district is Matapanai. My driveway is across from the Matapanai Golf Course. That driveway is seven tenths of a mile from the driveway into the subject property. The, as you've already heard, the increase is from 6.2 acres to 24.5 acres front of the road and rear of the existing area. Increased hours of operation run from, there were change from 9:00 a.m. now to 8:00 a.m., and on Sundays extended from 8:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Events are asked to increase from 70 to 150, which is two times plus. Guests increase from 150 to 250. The application says there would be no negative impact. I question that seriously. The factor of safety is always an issue. When you increase the traffic, you increase the potential for hazards. The area extended to Panola Road may have been explained, but I suggest that this isn't the last time this applicant will be back. Somewhere in the line, there are future plans that are not being discussed, not being revealed. Adjoining owners to the east and south, the impact to them amounts almost to a continued destruction or condemnation of their enjoyment of ownership. Last time around, Mr. Olaf said he was finished with barns. Well, since that time, he's built a third barn. I suggest you view all his comments with caution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, my name is Valerie Barlow Gordon.
Would you pull the mic down, please? Thank you.
I live on Panola Road, and I live in the Matapanai voting district.
What was your name again? I'm taking.
Valerie Barlow Gordon.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon.
And I've lived there for 46 years, so I know what's gone on and the impact of traffic and everything. When we first moved there, there were very few houses. Now there are over 68 houses on that road, so you can see what kind of traffic is already there from those houses. We have all the traffic that goes from the one side of the county to the other, to the high school and to the middle school, because they are the only middle and high schools, so that road is used. On a daily basis, the traffic is really, really a lot, and the speed is 40 miles per hour at the most, and it's never stopped at that. People go a lot faster than that, and I just feel like that I'm concerned about the impact that the additional attendees would cause and the extended hours and the extended, it would definitely increase the cars on the road, and when you increase cars, it increases the safety hazards. The traffic from the venues would impact the entire road. I know it's been discussed that it would not impact the road, the end that goes to 207. Well, how can you say who's going to come to the venue? Some people come from the north, some people come Some people come from the north, some people come from the south. So it in, it does impact the entire road. And if they come off of ninety-five at Lady Smith, it's going to come right by my house as well as everyone else on that end of the road. And I have to go to three oh one and I have to go to two oh seven, depending on which, what I'm going to. So it does impact. And I think that um, that I feel like that you all, um, that that I know that the county wants to make money, but should the money be uh a priority over the safety? And you're not only talking of the safety of just the residents, but you've got farmers on that road. You've got all the traffic that is commuting on that road from the Lady Smith area to three oh one. So we do have a lot of traffic. And one day you might have a lot and another not. But I myself have been living there, I said forty-six years. I be, am running the ditch numerous times. So now when I, when I see a fast driver coming, I just pull over and stop. It's not wide enough for two vehicles, really. If the, the road itself needs repair, and I don't think it's in the future that anything be done. So we really just do not need any more traffic on the road. And I'd appreciate it if you all would think of the residents in the county for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Anyone else wishing to speak? Sheriff, if you hadn't have come up, I was going to call on you.
I got you. Scott Moser, Bowling Green District, Sheriff. Uh, Craig Pennington had contacted me some time ago and asked about some statistics about the accidents on Panola Road. Uh, I did pull those statistics from our, from our records. And in two thousand and twenty-one, there were seven accidents. Two thousand and twenty-two, there were seven accidents. Two thousand and twenty-three, there were eight accidents. And two thousand and twenty-four, as of today, as of this date, there was four accidents. So I did some additional research, um, because he had asked about DUIs. In two thousand and twenty-one, we had one DUI off of Panola Road, uh, driving while under the influence. And no other DUIs or arrests made on Panola Road for the rest of the years. So, so one, two, three, four, four years, no other DUIs, just that one in twenty-one. Uh, so I did some uh statistics on the calls for service for the barns in Mattapanah. And we did have, I went back as far as two thousand and seventeen, but I think Mr. Olaf owned it in two thousand and seventeen. I think he got it in two thousand and eighteen. But from two thousand and eighteen on, uh, we had eight calls for service for a control burn. And that would have been Mr. Olaf preparing his facility. Uh, one disabled vehicle, one nine-one-one hangup, and two open lines. And according to our CAD dispatch, that is all. We haven't had any calls for service from the sheriff's office, fire and rescue for the actual facility when they're doing events. We had none. So, uh, Mr. Pennington asked me for that information, so I pulled that. Uh, I know Mr. Olaf, uh, and I've been to the barns on many different events in the community. Um, there's a lot of programs that are held there for Caroline County. And he's been a great community partner. And uh, I've worked with him and other entities in the county that's had events at the facility, and it is a nice facility.
Thank you, Sheriff. What were the last two calls that you mentioned?
Uh, a nine-one-one hangup, which resulted as nothing, and then an open line. A lot of times when you get an open line, it's a faulty line through the phone system. So there's really been no calls for service for any type of event that he's had.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Kevin Whitman again, Bowling Green District.
I, I'd like to echo Mr. Olaf's comments. The ninety percent of what he's asking for. Over the years, we have approved a lot of these wedding venues, and they've, they've become big. And in Caroline, we have Mossneck and uh the State Fair, Mr. Olaf, Mr. Sullivan. Um, there's quite a few of them. So I think his comments about keeping them all on a level playing field is good. I don't think one facility should be able to have a hundred and then another facility two hundred or two hundred and fifty. And I think that needs to be consistent. And I, reviewing his, his request, I, I agree with him that about ninety percent of it is, is already out there. We, we've already approved it for other venues. Um, one thing, change is inevitable. I know, I know the folks that live on Panola Road want to, want to keep their existing conditions are as they are. Uh, I, I live out on Dodge City Road and it's way out there and it's kind of rural. And I, I would want it to stay that way as long as it's, long as it can. But change is inevitable. Um, I, I remember when I first started, where M C Dean was, was all woods. It was, it was a wooded lot. And if you go by M C, M C Dean today, i- it's one of the largest campuses, not only around here, but I'd say from Richmond to DC. Uh, Mr. Olaf and his staff have, have turned this into a jewel of not only Caroline County, but, but all the surrounding areas. And to echo the sheriff, Mr. Olaf and his staff opened their arms for community departments. Uh, Scotty and I run the Humane Society. They allow us to use their facility for free for fundraising events. And uh, and anything Mr. Olaf and his staff have proposed, they followed through. Um, so I would recommend we approve this uh, this change of uh, for the special exemption. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitman. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman and the other commissioners. I'm Calvin B. Taylor, Senior, and I reside in the Port Royal District. And I'm here tonight to support Mr. Olaf on his request. I remember some years ago when I sat on the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Olaf came before the board with his request for Mattapanah Springs. Uh, and there were concerns, as there always are. But Mr. Olaf was given his request. And Mattapanah Springs is a jewel for Caroline County. Uh, it's one of the facilities among many, but it's one of the facilities uh that speaks to elegance in the county. Uh, Mr. Olaf is not someone that we don't know. He's been around for a while and he has proven himself to be a, a businessman as well as an honest man. He's a man of dignity and honor. Uh, we generate funds from Mr. Olaf's uh, uh business. Uh, there are always going to be some negatives, but we deal with them. And we don't deal with them by stopping a good businessman from expanding his business. The sheriff's office, and I'm not the sheriff, obviously, but I know him. He's a good man. And I believe that he will do whatever is necessary to keep that road as safe as he can. And in closing, I would just like to say, in this day and time, the way things are, if you can get a business that does not impact the school system, if you can get a business that does not bring you more rooftops, if you can get a business that does not increase the services, then I think we need to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. And sir, thank you for your past uh service to the county.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. I'm Anthony A. Lippa, Jr. I reside in the Ureedy Church District. And I've known the Olaf family since nineteen ninety-eight, when I was stationed here as a trooper in nineteen seventy-nine. So I've been in this area for a long, long time. And when I look at what Mr. Olaf has gone through, through the Planning Commission, through the Board of Supervisors, he's done everything top-notch. You can't ask for a better place than what he's done and what he continues to do. You've heard everyone that's come up that's talking about the positives to this facility. When you look at how much he's given back, not just to Caroline County, but most recently, the Folds of Honor. Now, I got here late because I was at the Little League announcing. But if you weren't familiar with that, it just occurred last week. All of the proceeds went to the Folds of Honor. Nothing to Mattapanah. So it took care of servicemen, women, and also uh our first responders. So not just Caroline County, high school golf team uses the facility and the golf course itself. And I know we're looking at the special exemptions of what he's been trying to do, but it all started with that golf course in nineteen ninety-eight. And if you look at Mr. Olaf, Adam, his entire family, Ms. Bunny, Aaron, they do everything for the good of the community. If you have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer them since I've been here the longest and I'm the oldest goat around. Mr. Wandy, it's good seeing you again.
Sure, I, I don't think there are any questions, but thank you for your comments. And again, sir, thank you for your past service.
Thank you, Mr. Swans.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, uh, Vice Chairman and the Commissioners. Uh, my name is Dr. Monroe. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Caroline County Public Schools. And I would just like to bring positive comments tonight on behalf of the School Division and the Superintendent, Dr. Cal Veric. Um, this evening, um, it, again, it's my plum-pleasing pleasure to share my enthusiastic words of support on behalf of Mattapanah Springs and their proposed expansion plan. In these brief few minutes, I will share remarks from three lenses. That of the Caroline County Public School Division, the proud CCPS Assistant Superintendent, and also on behalf of Dr. Cal Veric, the Superintendent, and simply as a come here, as Dr. Cal Veric and I both are come here consumers. As a school division, our partnership with Mattapanah Springs has been invaluable and diverse in nature, ranging from event rentals for our annual employee recognition banquet to the Partners in Education recognition breakfasts, to the CCPS Leadership Retreat, to the Transportation Department's school opening meeting. The barns, the lodge, and clubhouse offer our school community with not only an aesthetically beautiful home away from school, but a well-equipped facility and facilities that create a sense of pride, ambiance, and welcome. Beyond affordable and accommodating grounds and event spaces, a school superintendent and staff works diligently to align themselves in the division with partners in education who can develop a symbolic relationship, one that is mutually beneficial. But more specifically, one that is aligned with our district's strategic plan goals and our building, department, and club's unique needs. For example, in the summer of twenty twenty-three, the Cavalier Football Club hosted their first and now annual golf tournament. Mattapanah Springs' white glove treatment and depth of knowledge supported these novice tournament organizers with creating a successful, fun, and lucrative event. Now to turn to the Caroline High School golf team. The players not only practice on their beautifully manicured course, but host home matches and tournaments with great Caroline pride. To further this partnership as an eight-year come here consumer, you have to ask what keeps me and us coming back? Great service, great spaces, but most of all, great people. Ms. Tammy Anderson, the Director of Events, greets you with a smile and a can-do attitude at all times, under all circumstances. She and Mr. Olaf recognizes the value of working collaboratively. We work to champion greatness for one another. There is not more validating evidence of this than Tammy's willingness to serve the Caroline Education Foundation Board, working to spearhead large and small-scale initiatives that benefit students. Yes, sir.
Wrap it up, please.
Uh, yes, sir. I just want to say this is how we do it. Uh, may this partnership be a model for how businesses and schools do more than just coexist. They work diligently for the collective betterment of one another's mission and vision. And I can only begin to fathom what new opportunities will arrive when the proposed Mattapanah Springs Expansion Plan comes to fruition. Thank you all very much for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak regarding this matter? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, thank you. My name is Tammy Anderson, and I am a resident of um Western Caroline County for the last twenty-one years. My husband and I have raised our children here. Um, I am a come here still, I'm considered. Um, I have, for the last ten years, had to work outside of our county to do the job that I love to do. Um, it was two years ago that um I was invited to Mattapanah Springs and um was asked to be their Director of Events. And it has been nothing but a pleasure to serve our community and um this small business um during this time. And with this expansion, it will make a little bit more work, but I think it'll be well worth it for not only our business, but our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, sir, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. My name is John Thomas. I reside in-
John, what was your last name?
Thomas.
Thomas, thank you.
Sorry. Um, I reside in Mattapanah District. I've lived in this county for over twenty years now with my wife and daughter. First had the opportunity to cross paths with Mattapanah Springs in the summer of twenty-two when I accepted the role as General Manager of the golf course. Just before I arrived, the barns at Mattapanah Springs opened up as a wedding and event venue. These two breathtaking barns frame a vintage-style manor house, which is an architectural work of art. These structures have fulfilled many hopes and dreams for brides and grooms over the last few years, as well as their guests. For the two, excuse me, for the two years I've spent here, I've seen the business grow, expand, improve, and excel in customer service, quality, and giving our guests an experience like no other. I can also point out that the barns have had a positive effect with the golf course and increased play exposure and revenue due to our partnership. Most of our staff resides in Caroline County. We strive to hire locally from within the county. And the faster we grow and expand, the more residents we can bring onboard to employ. The barns regularly host events with the county directly, as well as, excuse me, as outreach to the community at large. We have held numerous events for the school system, county business, and political fundraisers, not just weddings and parties. All that we do, the excellence that we strive for every day, even the smallest of interactions is what has helped facilitate exposure to this beautiful venue and expose the gem of Caroline County that we call Mattapanah Springs. I support the special event venue permit for the barns at Mattapanah Springs, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Kate Cobb, and I reside in the Madison District. Um, I also am a native to Caroline County. I grew up here and went to school here. I currently work at the golf club at Mattapanah Springs, and I've been there since December of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, as a clubhouse manager, uh, it's just a thrilling job to have, being able to create, as has already been said, job opportunities. Um, and the barns is just an expansion of this beautiful property and facility. Um, we strive for first-class amenities and first-class experience. And um I support this expansion, and I hope that the county does as well. Um, it only brings more beautiful things to our county and our community and creating more job opportunities. Most of our staff in the golf club are high school students um or past graduates of, of the county. And I think that that speaks volumes. Um, but a lot of everything that has been said, I just wanted to piggyback. And I hope you guys um do consider this, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hobbs. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is David-
My name is David Hulser. Last name is spelled H-U-L-S-E-R, and I am a recent retiree. I retired from the FBI after a nearly 30-year career at the end of December of 2023. And I am now a part-time employee at the Mattapanai Springs Golf Club. I have had the opportunity to assist with a couple of events at the barns. And just to echo a lot of the other comments that were made by others about the entire Mattapanai Springs facility, the golf course, the barns, being described as a jewel. And I've had the opportunity to have a number of my golfing friends that have been first-time players at Mattapanai Springs, and I always am glad to hear how impressed they are with the facilities, the golf course facilities, the clubhouse. And then I've had the chance to take my friends over to the barns, and they are just absolutely blown away. And the description that I continue to hear from all of my friends and colleagues that have come to the facilities is this is truly a hidden gem. It's, a lot of my friends come from the Richmond and Hanover County area, and they, first timers to the facilities, and they're just blown away by it. So I'm just proud to be associated with it, to echo Kate's comments about the opportunities for the young high school and college students learning how to interact with people in the community and provide great service. It's just created all kinds of opportunities for them as they launch into their careers. So again, I would just ask that the approval by the Planning Commission go forward, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Final call. Anyone else wishing to speak regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Olaf, would you care to respond to any of the comments made?
Yes, yes, just very briefly. There is no, there is no third barn. Mr. Lilly referenced some third barn. There is, there is no third barn that's part of this venue. The accident reports. Since we've had the golf course in the barns, hundreds of thousands of vehicles have gone in and out of our driveway over these many years. There has not been one single reported accident involving a vehicle coming into or out of the golf club or the barns. And lastly, I want to emphasize something that a number of employees have referenced. One of the things we're doing intentionally is to try to hire local people. Well over, well over 50% of our employees, which total over 50 people, reside in Caroline County. And I think you've seen a number of them. And we just, another comment I'll make, we just had a golf course reviewer company come through. They're completely independent, and they give us a report. I don't think they have ever listed a facility as a 10. And when they were finished under the category of the experience, we were given a 10. And that says a lot about these, some of these people who you've seen today, who are providing what I believe is first-class international service. We are not just servicing golfers from Caroline County. We get people from all over the country. We've had a group recently from Norway. I still don't know how they found out about us, but they came intentionally to play at Mattapanai. And we've got a lot of interstate golfers who regularly stop going north and or south to play at the course. So we thank you for your comments, and we ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olaf. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Olaf? No questions, Mr. Olaf. You may have a seat. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pennington?
I have, I have some questions for Mr. Pennington. So I know now that our goal is to make it consistent with all these type venues, the regulations for all these venues. Is there anything on here that we are giving Mr. Olaf that we have not given to the other facilities? One that kind of sticks out on my mind is number nine, the time. Is that the same as the other facilities?
So every special exception request has to stand on its own merits. And so without going back and looking at the other ones, I'm not sure as to what their opening and closing times are for each one individually. Some of them had their own, their own goals and objectives as to what they wanted to host. But overall, the conditions that staff commented on, they had, some of those conditions have been removed from more recent approved special exceptions?
I mean, number nine, the 8:00 AM, I don't know, have we done that yet? Didn't we have something for all these facilities, a time that we were suggesting?
Hours of operation is usually a condition that's placed on the facilities. But without going back and looking at the other four facilities that have been approved, I can't say for sure if they were 8 o'clock opening or 9 o'clock opening.
Okay. That's the only one that I could see that stuck out in my mind that might be different, but I'm not sure because I don't have the paperwork in front of me. That's all I had for me. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question?
I don't have any questions. Just, Dr. Horton, just to, for, I definitely agree with what we've been trying to accomplish as far as making the plan feels even. And I think that is extremely necessary and rewarding to the departments in the county. I just don't, for the record, I just do not like the idea of handicapping our businesses. I think that we should take each one as a case-by-case situation. However, we will not, we will not grow at the capacity that we should grow at if we handicap our businesses that are profitable and supportive of the county. This business has shown quite a bit of interest in the county as well as support of the county. I, you know, so with that being said, I would like, you know, I would like to make a motion if some of the other Commissioners don't have anything else to add to this.
If you don't mind, I'd just like to make a, I guess, a statement to the public on our behalf. When we hold public hearings and the public speaks, we do not take into consideration the number of people they may speak for or against a particular issue. We do not take into account their present or former county ties, if you will. Their station in the county, past or present, does not weigh any more than that of any other citizen. What we look at is, is the request legal? Is it justified, and is it warranted? That is the weighing measure that we use. Not the number of people that speak for or against, nor the status within the county. Each citizen has the same weight as anyone else. And I understand the concerns by Ms. Borden and Mr. Lilly. One of their common themes is traffic. At the first time that this matter came before us a couple of years ago, I requested the sheriff to conduct a traffic analysis if it was. Those numbers still hold true, and the information that Sheriff Moser provided tonight show that the load numbers are being sustained. Ever since the increase that was granted a year or so, two years ago, there's been no significant impact upon traffic safety on Panola Road. But I just want the citizens to know that we consider everyone's opinion with the same weight. And with that, I do think we need to discuss some of the changes in the conditions. I am in favor of accepting every recommendation made by staff. Some items are redundant and repetitive, which, well, redundant and repetitive, that's repetitive in itself, isn't it? But there's no point in beating the same horse twice. There are some things already covered in other areas. The items that staff recommends remain in place. My suggestion is that those items should also remain in place. Those that should be removed should be removed. I do think we need an additional condition regarding the 175-foot setback. A 50-foot setback I just am not comfortable with because if you're having an arts and crafts showing they're spread out towards Panola Road within 50 feet, people wander around, children. Let's just maintain a safe zone and keep it, and move it back to 175 feet and put it in writing. That's my only suggestion.
That's not on the list.
No, we would have to add that as a, an additional condition.
That's the setback from, that's the setback from Panola Road.
Correct.
We added.
Are we clear on that, on what the suggestion is, Mr. Pennington? I want to make sure I worded right, or it's worded correctly.
Yes, we can make that a condition, that the special exception envelope shall not exceed the RP zoning setback of 175 feet from the front property line.
All right. You maintained that wording. That's too much for me to write down right now. Thank you. All right. Commissioners, any other discussion regarding the modifications on the conditions? Hearing none, the Chair will accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve with modifications where a special exception request, SPEX042024, for the modifications based upon what Mr. Pennington suggested, 175 feet from the road, appears to be consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and future land use map. And whereas the public necessity convenience request, convenience, I'm sorry. General welfare and good zoning practices warrant the approval of this request. I recommend that SPEX042024 be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with recommendation of approval with those following changes.
Check it.
Motion by Mr. Young, seconded by Mr. Weber.
Mr. Schwartz.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, the motion is to include the 175-foot setback for the special exception envelope and to include all staff suggested conditions on these suggested changes. Is that also to include the staff suggested new condition regarding a noise and vibration study prior to any outdoor amplified events?
Yes, sir, in its entirety.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Young, seconded by Mr. Weber. Is there any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all those in favor of approval, recommending approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation of approval. I believe that's going to conclude Mr. Pennington's presentation. And Mr. Hughes, did we save the best for last?
So good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. This is a request of Luck Development, CAO4-2024, for a comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Article 17, Section 15 of the Caroline County zoning ordinance. The property is located off Jericho Road, to the west of the intersection of Jericho Road and Rogers Clark Boulevard and US Route 1 and Zion Road. Currently, the property is within the Carmel Church Growth Area with a land use designation of rural transition area. Generally, the area in the yellow stripes is the area that is designated as rural transition currently on the future land use map. This request encompasses 17 parcels with eight owners totaling 1,196 acres of the area, which is approximately 1,500 acres. This is a map from the Carmel Church Growth Area Plan that identifies the future land uses in the Carmel Church Growth Area. The land uses are identified by alphabet with a description for each. The area that is the subject of this request is the white area, south of Jericho Road and west of US Route 1. Again, this general area in here. Excuse me. The description of this area notes that the area is intended to be the transition from the community to the more rural parts of the county. The use of conservation subdivisions is envisioned to be located in the areas designated as rural transition. Conservation subdivisions should have a majority of the parcels reserved in permanent open space with overall, an overall density of 1/2 unit per acre. Open space preservation needs to be accomplished through the donation to a land trust or some other nonprofit entity. That's language from the comp plan. But since the adoption of the county, of the plan, the county has not entertained significant residential development within the Carmel Church Growth Area and focused on attracting businesses, commercial, and industrial uses along the 207 corridor in accordance with the Carmel Church Plan. This has led to the current development pattern and the market identifying the area for industrial uses. The rezoning of the land for the Carmel Church Station, which is identified as a UDA area on the map, and that is identified as Area A there on the screen, eliminated about 1,000 acres of land that was identified on the future land use map for industrial purposes. The inactivity of residential development that was a part of that project certainly plays a role in this area being attractive for industrial uses. This slide represents and shows the subject parcels in blue and yellow. The blue area is approximately 1,007 acres and represents the land area that is currently within the Carmel Church Growth Area boundary. The yellow is approximately 189 acres and is the area outside of the current boundary. This request, in addition to changing the land use designation, is a request to move the Carmel Church Growth Area boundary so that the land area has consistent designations and is in, always in the Carmel Church Growth Area. The distances identified represent the approximate distances the boundary would move um, at specific locations. And so up at Jericho Road, you can see the current boundary is here at Long Creek and the dash line represents the current boundary of the Carmel Church Growth Area. As I noted, the yellow area is the area which is outside of the Carmel Church Growth Area, but are part of parcels that go beyond this dash line. So on Jericho Road, that distance of expansion would be about seven hundred and ninety-two feet. As you move a little bit further south here, it expands a little bit further, it's thirteen hundred and eighty-four feet. It's about five hundred and ninety feet here. And I'll point out, the green areas here do represent um, residential areas and properties here. So it's, it becomes relatively close there. And then here is probably the, the largest distance that would move, about nineteen hundred and thirty-three feet from the current boundary out to the edge of the parcel there. Also here, it extends about fourteen hundred and seventy-five feet out to the boundary here. And there's a slight anomaly here, this parcel does cross Oxford Road. And so there's about a half acre that's on the south side of Oxford Road there. And at some point, we'd ask the applicant to maybe dispose of that or do something um, with that half acre so that the growth boundary does not extend beyond Oxford Road. So that change, excuse me. Extending the boundary will not change the policies and goals identified in the plan of maintaining a growth boundary and for this area to be a transition. As noted in the staff report, any proposed changes to uses in this area will require changing the zoning designation with a zoning request. And as noted in the staff report, any requests for rezoning should give significant consideration to maintaining the rural character near the proposed boundary by maintaining mature trees, vegetation at the edge of the boundary and orienting uh, potential uses towards the interior of the property away from residential uses. And as I noted, there are two clusters of residential uses adjacent to uh, the proposed boundary. As I noted, one along Jericho Road uh, here and then continuing along Oxford Road here. And then there is also a cluster of homes on Zion Road uh, over here that are clusters of residential uses as well. The purple area there represents the Mount Zion Baptist Church. I would note over here, there are nineteen residential uses and here there are four that are adjacent to it. So this is a map of the current land use pattern or land use map in the county's comprehensive plan. I I provide this just for reference. There was additional information in your packet that talked about the goals and policies of the Carmel Church Growth Area. And as in the side, we have received several letters of support for this recommendation or for this amendment and uh, the applicant is present tonight, has a presentation. And this will conclude my presentation as well, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
To put it in a nutshell, Mr. Hughes, we're speaking of a hundred and eighty-seven acres of land that is already owned by Luckstone. Is that correct?
Not entirely, Luckstone has commitments or potential contractual, you know, obligations or agreements with potential animals there. I said seventeen parcels are about eight different landowners. So Luck doesn't control every single parcel that is the subject of this request.
All right, so am I hearing you correctly? Luckstone, the, the area that was in the gray, if we can go back to that. Yes, sir. The area that's in the light blue or gray, whichever you want to call it. Is that property owned by Luckstone at this point?
Not every parcel in that area is owned by Luckstone. So there are parcels along Zion Road that Luck does not own along here in this area. They don't own the property which is the Carmel School.
All right, the, the other area that you just mentioned, is that land already in an industrial zoning? Or uh, rural preservation, what is it?
The zoning is RP Rural Preservation.
Okay, for the entire blue section?
Yes.
Okay. The area in yellow, is that land that is presently owned by Luckstone?
Some of it is, yes, not wholly. But some of it is, yes. I think the applicant can speak more directly to the ownership and their
All right.
potential agreement to purchase.
All right, so thank you. Commissioners, any further questions of Mr. Hughes at this time? Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Would the applicant care to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission.
Good evening.
Thank you. Um, my name's John Riley. I am the general manager of Luck Real Estate Ventures, which is a real estate-focused business unit within Luckstone. Um, if you all, I think most of you are familiar, but Luckstone is a hundred-one-year-old, family-owned, family-operated construction aggregates business that's headquartered in the Richmond area. Uh, we've been operating um, sand and gravel operation in Caroline County for uh, close to thirty years now. Um, and we've owned uh, the majority of the subject property that we're talking about this evening um, for almost about the, the same amount of time. As Mr. Hughes mentioned, you know, since two thousand and six, uh, the majority of our property um, that, that Luckstone owns has been included uh, in the growth area of the Carmel Church Area Plan. And um, over that time, we've considered a, a number of different uses for the property, uh, all with uh, the intention and um, a mind towards the surrounding community and how those uses might impact it. As we've looked at this most recently with uh, I think what uh, some of what Mr. Hughes was alluding to, the growth that's been taking place um, in the area. Um, we believe that this property is best suited for an innovative employment and economic development center for the county. And um, as such, have, have filed this comprehensive plan amendment um, that's before you this evening. Um, as with all of our projects, um, in, in, in any locate, in any location, any locality that we're, we're planning a project, uh, we started this process by discussing our plans with the surrounding community, uh, understanding their concerns, understanding how our, our project may impact them. Um, that's included uh, meetings with um, most of the individual landowners that surround us. Um, and holding a broader community meeting, uh, which was held on May fifteenth. We had about sixty people in attendance at that meeting and were able to um, spend a good amount of time with a lot of our neighbors, uh, helping them understand what it is that we're proposing this evening. And um, you know, we continue to gather a lot of information, um, a lot of great suggestions, um, address a lot of concerns, um, I'm sure we'll still have some more to, to address as we continue to build the zoning application that'll be filed uh, following this application. You know, the benefit of bringing the balance of the property uh, that we're discussing tonight, this hundred and eighty-nine acres of the, of the twelve hundred approximately total into the growth area um, and designating it for future employment and economic development opportunities. Um, is that including a, a property of this size um, gives us the ability to accommodate um, a lot of the uses that would be attracted to a, to a comprehensive plan designation and ultimately hopefully a zoning designation that supports those types of businesses, while at the same time providing the ability to provide a significant buffer, uh, as Mr. Hughes mentioned, um, to those residential users that are adjacent to us, preserving the environmental features that are on the property. Um, as well as being, allowing us to orient, you know, any traffic that's generated from the project as much as we can towards Route one. Um, and then, you know, lastly, you know, I think an, an important portion of this is that, you know, this is a project that's going to be completed by an organization um, in Luck that is a longstanding member of the community and one that takes great pride in being a positive partner in the communities where we operate. Um, so we're, we're excited to be presenting this to you this evening. Um, we will go back through the, um, through the map and also have Charlie Payne uh, with us this evening from Herschler, and I might actually let him run through a few of those, the specific details of the project and, and also address uh, some of the questions related to the, to the property ownership. Uh, one thing i- is important for us, that all of the property that we've submitted as a part of this application, uh, we're working with those landowners, um, they're part of the application. Um, so, you know, we're not including any property that's, you know, that, that's outside of, you know, a relationship that, that we already have. I'll turn it over to Charlie.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Riley, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Mr. Chairman, other members of the planning commission, my name is Charlie Payne and represent the applicant. I appreciate your time this evening, I know it's been a long evening and I'm batting third tonight, so I, I don't know how much more I can add to uh, to the presentation. I think uh, staff and Mr. Riley have done a really good job of uh, of outlining and describing what we're proposing here. And I appreciate Mr. Riley throwing in the uh, last word about working with all the property owners. So all the property that you see that we have proposed for the comprehensive plan change include property owners that we've been working with who are part of the application. So I want to make sure that was clear, in addition to Luckstone owning some of those properties as well. So I'll go through this PowerPoint real quick, it's not, it's not very, not very big. Uh, as staff had noted, you know, this is, uh, this is a large assemblage, you know, well over a thousand acres, almost close to twelve hundred acres, includes sixteen different parcels. You can see here the, the outline in the, in the, the dark green uh, area uh, that is, is located just west of the intersection of Jericho Road and Rogers Clark Boulevard, uh, you know, west of Route one and near the I ninety-five interchange and it's in the, the Reedy uh, voting district, uh, Mr. Young's district. Uh, you know, there's a lot of attraction here for in, industrial uses and purposes. Not only is it a growth area, the Carmel Church Primary Growth Area encourage it, but you're not too far from the inter, the interchange and I ninety-five and some major thoroughfares. Um, the approximate area that we are asking to includes about a hundred and eighty-nine acres. Uh, most of this property, as you know, is already included in the, in the subject growth area. Uh, we do request to fully include the entirety of the property for office industrial, as you know, and the properties are zoned RP. And we do have a pending rezoning application to M one that we're working on, we haven't submitted it yet. Wanted to get through this process with you, of course, uh, and putting together all the appropriate analysis that need to be done for any major rezoning of this kind. Factors, we think, that support the project, um, again, it's serviced by, has regional access to public water and sewer facilities along Rogers Clark Boulevard. It is serviced by Rapid Electric Co-op, uh, electric facilities uh, in the immediate area. It is located within two miles of the county's natural gas pipeline, which is very attractive for industrial users. It's located within the proximity to the planned reuse water system the county is working on with a reasonable ability to connect to that. Uh, and of course, being located off of US one, like I said, not too far from the interchange, makes it very attractive. Uh, this request will clarify, as you know, those properties that are kind of split, if you will, in regards to the current future land use plan. Uh, this will help clarify those properties and also create and give us the ability for that transition buffer to the west when we do develop the site. Yeah, and, and focusing a lot of that development towards the center of the overall assemblage. Um, currently, the property would be developed uh, for, for approximately a hundred and nineteen homes by right and it generates about fifteen thousand dollars in tax revenue. Uh, our fiscal impact analysis that we did, uh, that we're going to present to the county for purposes of the rezoning, just comparing that, 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 that number, if you will, what's being currently generated in tax revenue. A full buildout, uh, industrial, for an industrial park, um, the project could generate a half a billion dollars in economic output. It could generate close to twenty-eight million dollars in annual tax revenue benefits to the county, about eighteen hundred jobs. So this is a real opportunity, I think, uh, for the county uh, in regards to uh, getting a, not only a, a corporate citizen, a long-term corporate citizen that the county knows very well. Um, uh, you, uh, developing a project of this kind and doing it in a way that we, uh, that Caroline County would want it done, uh, but also create a significant number of new jobs and tax revenue for the county, which is very important. Um, and this I, we thought would be a good slide to show, so you can clearly see the difference of what's already in the growth area and what we're proposing to add to the growth area. And I'm happy to answer any questions and I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. If you could go back to the last slide, sir, please.
Yes, sir.
I'm old. Okay? So help my feeble mind work through this. The areas in blue are not entirely owned by Luckstone as of this moment.
Correct, correct. Most of it is, but how many acres? You, John, John can probably answer that question.
It might be helpful. Where do you, where do, how do I do this?
Uh, right here, see the, where do you want to go backwards?
No, I was gonna use that, use the pointer thing.
It'd be helpful if I had my glasses on.
There we go, at the top.
It's the red, right in the middle there.
You want to borrow mine?
So the, so the properties, oh, yeah, there we go. Um, yeah, I see it. So the properties that we currently own come down, oh, this is Route one. So we come down Route one and then the, the properties that have the writing in them, which are, um, that's the, the property owner information. This cluster right here, which is about um, eighty acres, we do not currently own those properties, but we have um, agreements with those property owners regarding the inclusion of them in this, in this application as well as a future zoning application. The rest, the balance of that property that you see outlined in blue up to this point is owned by, um, is owned by Luckstone. This property and the property on this side are not owned by Luckstone. Again, but are subject to agreements with those landowners related to the submission of, of this application. Where you were at, I believe the question you, uh, Mr. Schwartz, you were asking earlier regarding the change in color. Um, this is, this portion of, of the green area here, you know, these are, these are not property lines, this is the growth area boundary.
Right, I, I believe that's the creek that they used as a boundary line.
Long Creek, correct. So on this parcel, Luckstone owns both sides of the creek. Um, this area is, is actually owned by the, um, by the Carmel School. This area is owned by this property owner. Um, and these are all contiguous parcels, um, it's just the growth area is currently splitting them. And the, the purpose of moving the boundary of the growth area is to align the growth area with the property lines as opposed to that environmental feature running through the property so that in the, you know, in the future and development doesn't create confusion between what is in and what is out of the growth area. Um, to do it on the parcel basis rather than on, um, you know, the, the line as it's drawn today.
That does make sense, uh, and I, I guess. And I'm not asking for any business secrets by, by any means. Uh, but let's say, uh, you have some contracts, e- even if you get what you're asking for and you have some contracts that fall through. That's, is that going to have a negative impact uh, upon, excuse me, upon your goals?
Um, it, you know, it would, it would change the way that the project would ultimately be developed, but you know, Luckstone owns, oh, I'm sorry. Luckstone owns, uh, I think we own approximately seven hundred and seventy acres of the total, um, twelve hundred that's included in the application. So, you know, the project would still be significant enough, um, and, and certainly of interest for us to be able to develop on its own. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're confident in, in, in being able to work through, um, you know, through the details with the, with the other landowners, but you know, I, I think the project would ultimately, you know, upon rezoning, would still be developed um, under strictly our ownership, but you know, I think it, it, it'll be a enhanced project with, with the other part. but, you know, I think it, it'll be a enhanced project with, with the other partners that we're working with.
Well, Mr. Riley, let me ask you this. One of the things that you brought forward was the overhead power lines owned by RAC. Do you know what wattage or what the voltage is on those lines?
Yeah, it's just, it's just distribution power right now. I mean, the, the, we're not aware of any, any plans to extend transmission level power to, you know, that would service this property. You know, that, that could change in the future, but to our, at this point, you know, the infrastructure is, you know, not, not planned to be extended to our property. The power that is available is sufficient to be able to serve the type of industrial users that we believe would, would be interested in this property, but at this point, that transmission level power is not, you know...
And of course, the reason I ask is that we had a somewhat nearby piece of property that was touting the 500 KV lines as a selling point, and we found that that was just not workable. So I just wanted to make sure we're not going down that rabbit hole again.
No, sir.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Riley. Commissioners, anyone else have any questions?
Yeah. You mentioned some of the benefits for the county such as jobs, economic growth, development, things of that nature. What is some of the perks? Maybe I shouldn't use that word. What are some of the benefits for the community?
Well, of course, in addition to the infrastructure, I mean, in addition to the tax revenue to be generated from the site, which is quite significant, and the new jobs, which would be obviously significant. Of course, during the construction period, it's just not new jobs at full buildout. You also have job opportunities for local contractors and employees and suppliers during construction. There's also part of this project, which you've not, obviously not seen, we're in the process of putting together, would include, you know, the major infrastructure improvements in this, in this location as well. And we're going through the, the details of what to include in the proper statement. So we're, we're open to any suggestions you may have or the commission may have on other community needs and things that we should be focusing on. I will also note, in regards to the immediate community, and, and many of you may be aware of this, but the outreach on this project, the community outreach to this point's been fairly significant, including working with the local church, and I'm sure you guys got a copy of the support letter that came from the church. So, yeah, so we're, we're, we're all about, and of course, this is a long-term corporate partner in the county, so this is, this is about the community for sure. And I truly believe this is a great opportunity for a real economic development site that I'm sure the county will be very proud of.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Also, what is your, give us kind of like a timeline for the entire development?
Yeah, and John may be able to answer that question, but this is going to be a big project, so it's going to take a while to build out. But John, I don't know if you guys have done any scoping on what that might look like.
Um, you know, I think this, to Charlie's point, this is a, this is a longer-term project. I think there is, and, you know, you can say there is, there is significant interest in, in the project from, you know, from these types of users. So I would expect, you know, upon, upon zoning, obviously, we have to work through, you know, the zoning application itself, and then the subsequent, you know, site plans and other documents that would be required for someone to start developing it. But I would have expected to develop relatively soon, and then with that volume of acreage, you know, I think you're probably looking at a, you know, probably a 10-year or so total buildout for, for the project, maybe a little bit more. Obviously, you know, the economic cycles as they are, you know, could, could, could ebb and flow a little bit, but I think a project that size, you know, it's, it's a, it's a decade or so that, that, that it would take to fully build it out.
Do you have it broken out into phases?
Yeah, I think based on infra, you know, to, based on infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
Um, you know, obviously, the, you know, ideally, we're, we'd, we'd start closer to Route One and work our way back into the, back into the, into the project, but, you know, if, if the right user came along that needed a, you know, needed a, a larger land bay, or, you know, we, we try to, try to accommodate that. And back, just quickly on the, kind of the infrastructure expansion, a lot of what we are focused on with the surrounding community is ensuring that as we develop that infrastructure, particularly the utilities, that we're being very mindful of extending them, you know, beyond just the, you know, just the users in our project and being able to extend those, you know, particularly towards, towards Zion Road, towards Jericho Road, so that, you know, the, the, as the, as the infrastructure, you know, both, you know, the wet utilities as well as, you know, I know, you know, internet's a big, you know, is a big need, fiber, it's a big need being able to extend that beyond, you know, just the boundaries of our project and be able to serve the, the community as a whole.
Okay. And my last would be, given some of our other developments that we have approved in the past that haven't gotten any legs, would you all have any type of maybe guarantees or something back to the county to consider this project to move forward?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Young. A very good question, and I, absolutely a reasonable question. I think the advantages here are if you look at what is, you know, one, this is a, you know, most of this site is already planned for future growth for industrial and office growth, but I think the, the really key piece is you have a developer and, you know, obviously a property owner that is long-term, large company, corporate citizen in Caroline County that can make this project work and attract the type of users who have the reputation to attract the type of users that can kick a project off. Let's also not forget, close to the gas line, electric infrastructure being nearby, water being nearby, those pieces are key ingredients for a real opportunity. So I, I, I'm bullish on this site moving faster, sooner rather than later.
Yeah. The one, the one thing I would add to that is that, you know, as I, as I mentioned, we've owned this property since, since 2000, early 2000s, late 90s, early 2000s, and we haven't moved forward with it because we haven't had, we haven't felt like there's the right opportunity. You know, we didn't want to, you know, to, to zone it speculatively, or, you know, there's, there's always some speculation, particularly in a project of this size. But, you know, the, the purpose in moving it forward now and bringing this application now is just the level of interest that's out there and, and our feeling that this is a project that, for all the reasons Charlie just mentioned, is, is one that's gonna, gonna activate quickly.
Thank you. So all the questions are...
And then what else? Dr. Horry?
So I have some questions concerning the green area. So the top left here, I can see something happening to that. It's located right on Jericho Road, but you've got the creek running through there, correct? Am I correct? Isn't there a creek?
It's a creek, yes.
So the back section, other than the top left, the rest of the back section, I'm not sure what could be done with that because it's so close to the creek and there's no access to it right now. So what is your plans for including that area?
So as, as, as Stafford noted, some of these properties, literally the future land use is splitting between, between them on the same, on the same property. So you've got future land use, you know, Carmel Church land use on portion of the property, and then, of course, outside of the growth area. So that would eliminate any confusion. This will also give us the ability to buffer the development to the west, so we'll be able to utilize that for purposes of the project and the rezoning. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to use that, that open space, that buffering space as part of the overall project. So to your point, some of those locations do have challenges for, for actual development, but they can be utilized to help transition buffering and setbacks and screening.
So it'd be, it may be for buffering and, and setbacks and such.
Right.
Because there's gonna be a setback along the creek anyway.
Right. So, and, and it will give us, again, the ability to eliminate any confusion over where you are in regards to the future land use on those parcels. But again, key, and as Stafford noted, transitioning area, that would be a, a good location for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Answer them.
Mr. Williams, Mr. Weber, any questions? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And before we open the public hearing, we're gonna take a 10-minute break. Thank you.
Thank you.
...
Session, meeting is back to order. We'll now open the public hearing regarding this comp plan amendment. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter of the comp plan amendment? Anyone wishing to speak regarding the comp plan amendment? Yes, sir, please come forward, state your name and your voting district.
Yes, my name is Gary Trey Taylor. Madison District is my voting district. Good evening. Again, my name is Gary Trey Taylor. Born and raised and currently reside in Carolina County. I come before you as a resident, community leader, licensed clinical social worker and representative of Oxford Mount Zion Baptist Church under the leadership of Bishop Dwayne T. Phil, Senior and First Lady Cherie Fields. Under their leadership, I serve as a deacon and head of the young adult ministry. And I'm here to express my support for the Luxstone new development project during the Route One corridor. This initiative promises to bring significant multifaceted benefits to our community, fostering economic growth, job creation, enhanced local amenities. The improvements in traffic and safety at the Route One and Carmel Church and South wards are critical. Our church, Oxford Mount Zion and its congregation has grown considerably and ensuring safe and efficient entrances and exits for all our services is paramount. These upgrades will not only benefit our church growth, but also enhance the daily commutes of our residents, making our roads safer and more reliable. The countywide economic benefits from this project's commercial and industrial growth should be utilized in a proper fashion. This growth will provide much needed funding for new fire station, school operations, EMS and law enforcement. It will enable us to support our, support our essential services better, ensuring our community remains safe, educated and well cared for. As a practicing social worker, we are taught to examine person and environment, simply meaning how does that person thrive in their community and if there are gaps and how do we address it? Opportunities for financial advancement and career advancement for Carolina residents increases and enhances quality of life. And when people feel their financial needs are met, their life outcomes increase. This project also will help address a major issue of access to high speed internet to the church and surrounding community. With the world moving at a fast pace, access to high speed internet is no longer a luxury, but a necessity. This aligns with my social work lens as well. In conclusion, this development project aligns with the values of Oxford Mount Zion Baptist Church, my values and ethics as a social worker and also our Carolina natives. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak regarding this matter? Final call, anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, public hearing is now closed. Our commissioners, uh, Mr. Riley, do you have any additional comments you would like to make at this time?
No, sir, Mr. Schwartz. Happy to answer any, any additional questions that you'll have.
All right, thank you. Stand by just one second. Commissioners, anyone have any questions for Mr. Riley? Thank you, sir. Any questions of staff?
If I may.
Yes, sir, Mr. Weber.
I want to, I want to ask the question about the procedure that takes place from here on in with the adjustment to the comp plan. Does it go to the board of supervisors? Does it come back to us? Leon, where does it, how does the procedure go from here on in?
Yeah, the comp plan, like any other change, would go to the board as well. So you all will make a recommendation and then it will go to the board for ultimate adoption.
But that's without any detail, Leon? In other words, if we just say, okay, we think it's a good idea to change the comp plan, then it goes to the board of supervisors?
It does.
I'm sorry, gentlemen, I, I'm missing the whole thing. I'm not seeing all the detail that I would normally like to see when I'm dealing with a change in a comprehensive plan. That's all I'm saying. In other words, I look over there and I see the blue area and they want the green area to be the blue area. But I don't see any, any factual detail that I could sink my teeth into and say, this is a good idea. Sorry. Thank you, Leon, it was not a, I just, get to it easily, Leon, you forget a little.
Well, Mr. Hughes, how does this change in the comp plan affect the area of growth that we are trying to maintain up the Route One and 95 corridor?
Well, adjusting the growth boundary to those parcel boundaries, it really doesn't change growth there at all. Like I said earlier, the policies of the plan don't change. So the policies of maintaining the utilities within the growth boundary would still be in place. The policy of maintaining the rural character would not be impacted because anything within that new area or any of that property at all, to change the uses would have to go through the rezoning process. And so, you know, if they were in order to maintain the rural character, that's where you'd get the detail of increased buffers, the transportation network, the utility network, those types of details would be, would come along with the rezoning application. I think if there's a concern about what this would do to the growth area, like I said, it would, it would potentially extend the water and sewers, I think 795 feet along Jericho Road. So those parcels, you know, it would be at the edge at that point. But the way the comp plan and the utility plan is set up, you know, utilities are not to be extended beyond the growth boundary. So from that perspective, it does not change the, the policies of the plan at all. And as I said, the way we would ensure that those policies were continued to be met would be through the rezoning process with the proffering and development of plans that would buffer and protect those residential uses that are currently there along Jericho and Oxford Road.
All right, sure. And one final question. From the, what I'm going to call the northeast corner of the blue area, how close is that to the present growth area for Carmel Church that's already established?
Well, it, it's all within the growth area. I mean, everything you see is within the Carmel Church growth area. This, this land right now is within the, the boundary of the Carmel Church growth area. Its designation is rural transition. So when the plan was developed in 2006, it was thought that this would be an area for residential development to occur on larger lots with preservation of open spaces. But as I said, you know, the county has not really entertained residential uses beyond what we have approved down in or up in the Pendleton area, what's up the street in Belmont, but there really hadn't been a residential rezoning in this area. And so I think when it was adopted, the adoption of the UDA area, which is Carmel Church Station, which had a significant portion of residential as well as some industrial uses, well, when the residential component of Carmel Church Station did not develop, we have industrial users, a data center now looking at the Carmel Church Station property for a site transitioning to industrial. The industrial users are now targeting and eyeing the land that is west of I-95 for industrial development. So it, it, the plan talks about this area being a commercial industrial area because of its proximity to I-95. So really, the, the extension of the boundaries, if, would make the zoning, if a zoning case came along and those properties within the blue got rezoned, you know, we would end up with properties owned, say for industrial, but we would have a growth boundary that would split those parcels. So you would essentially render that green area undevelopable, which is in some instances a fair amount of property. I think the other thing to, to think about is where you see that creek where it narrows, you know, you have the RMA, RPA buffer requirements. So there's a, a natural 200 foot buffer along the creek on either side. And then we could further enhance that where it narrows, where it's not very usable, to be even more of a buffer. So, but those are the types of details that would be worked out through the rezoning process. The other issue for why this kind of makes sense to switch this to industrial, as I alluded to, when the Carmel Church Station project was rezoned, that eliminated 1,000 acres of industrial property from our inventory of industrial land. I mean, if you look at the memo from Economic Development, you know, that was kind of what they were alluding to, that over the years, through the success of the Economic Development Department and attracting industrial users, we have built on a great majority of the land within the Carmel Church growth area that was zoned industrial or set aside for industrial uses. You couple that success with the elimination of 1,000 acres, our inventory of industrial land has been depleted. And this is a, an ideal location because of the transportation network to have industrial users. There would definitely have to be some improvements, you know, to accommodate significant development on this property, but that's not insurmountable and certainly could be an enhancement.
Maybe for simplicity's sake, the majority of the area in blue is already within the Carmel Church growth area. Is that correct?
All of it is in the Carmel Church growth area.
Even the area in green, that is what we are addressing at this point, the area in green.
The area in green is outside of the boundary, but luck has contracts or agreements to purchase those properties and they would, you can see some of those parcels now, you know, are split by the growth area.
And I, I, I think that might hopefully clarify the issue for some of us, is that what we're dealing with right now is the area in green, essentially 187 acres to be included in the Carmel Church growth area.
Well, there, there are two things. The other item is to change the land use designation of the blue area from rural transition to industrial.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any further questions, comments?
The two things though, they're asking for the two things to be done, Mr. Hughes, at the same time? For the blue to become industrial and the green to become industrial and become included in the growth area.
Yes, ma'am.
So they're asking for all that at once?
Yes, both items. There is no, there is no zoning. Remember, the, the change in the, the land use designation does not rezone the property. So like I said, if, if someone wanted to do a project, then they would, that's not RP, which would be residential, then they would have to come back and rezone the property. That would change the use, the zoning category of the property. The change in the comp plan just identifies the area, it's essentially the county saying, we deem this area suitable for commercial industrial development.
Okay, thank you. I, I do see, I mentioned this before, I do see the reasoning behind the top left, that's right on Jericho Road. The other that we're expanding, I mean, I kind of see the reasoning, but I'm, I'm not sure that a lot can be done with that unless they start buying other properties on Oxford Road and then asked to have it expanded down to Oxford Road. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Makes sense. Yeah, it makes sense. But I personally wouldn't want a piece of property that's split zone. So it makes sense to, to move the growth area to the boundaries of the property, to me. We don't have any control over what happens in the future, who buys what and ask for rezoning. I mean, that's, that's still, they would have to.
I think all farmers have property though, that's kind of split zone. Your house has got to be residential and then the rest of it's agriculture.
I'm just saying, me personally, I wouldn't want a parcel such as this that would be split zone, is what I personally would be saying, that's all. It makes sense to just move it to the property line. We've done it before, we did it last, a couple of meetings ago.
I'm just wondering what this other part, I mean, other than boundary?
I mean, it's, as I mentioned, it's a buffer area, it's almost unusable area. So, I mean, the county, I'm sure the county would put stipulations as to what you can and cannot do with those, with the buffers.
So Dr. Horton, if I can address the two items that you noted. So first, farmers don't typically have split zoning. Their property is owned agriculture and they have a house on it, it's owned agriculture as well.
Mine, mine wasn't. Said I had to leave out an acre for residential.
Every individual case is an individual case, but typically parcels don't have split zoning. We try to accomplish a single zoning classification on parcels. The other thing is that the applicant intends to access those areas in the green if they get a rezoning from the blue area. So the area that's kind of like an arrow shape.
How far, how far back is that towards Oxford Road?
Well, the... So this piece here touches off- so this piece here touches Oxford Road. This is Oxford Road right here.
How many feet do you know approximately?
This, you mean the distance from here to here?
Yeah.
Craig, can you bring up my slide, please?
Fourteen ninety-five, something of that nature.
Yeah, I thought we had it, yeah. Okay.
So that, that's a significant, a significant area in there. If you just drew a line from say there down to here, that's a significant amount of property that could be developed. The other place where there's an amount of property is this area in here.
Do, I mean, and do we really want to rezone on the other side of Oxford Road? I mean, we're not rezoning, but the change comprehensive plan?
We don't. And that's why I mentioned in my, my presentation that
Yeah, I thought you did.
That they have a five, a half acre piece right here on the south side of Oxford Road that, you know, hopefully the applicant could find something to do with. Yeah, we can actually pull that boundary back so that it stops there.
If you pull the boundary back, what are you going to do with that half acre?
Donate it to the the other neighbor.
It reminds me of a movie with Eddie Murphy when he found that there was a half penny left over from the selling of pork belly and he amassed a fortune out of those half pennies. All right, commissioners, anything further? Is there a motion?
And Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve. Whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good planning, land use, and zoning practices warrant the approval of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment, I recommend that the comprehensive plan amendment be forwarded to the board of supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
For the, every, everything, even on the other side of Oxford Road?
We're not, Oxford Road is not going to be, the other side of Oxford Road is not going to be included in that. I don't think that's what they said earlier. Do we want to make a modification with that?
So I think you would want to clarify that as a part of your motion, that the boundary would stop at Oxford Road and that piece that does extend across.
I make a motion that we approve it where's with the modifications, whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good planning, land use, and zoning practices warrant the approval of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment. I recommend that the comprehensive plan amendment be forwarded to the board of supervisors with a recommendation of approval with the following modifications, that the, the property line stops at Oxford Road.
Second.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Young, seconded by Mr. Weber and Mr. Williams. Any further discussion on the matter? There being no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Payne, I, I think that's the first time I have seen you successful on the first round and you're not leaving out of here bleeding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, planning commissioner.
Have a good evening. All right, ladies and gentlemen, any and all matters.
So any and all matters, so Mr. Pendleton is going to hand out your project list that you normally get when including your packet this time, so we're going to give it to you now. And then I have a couple pretty hefty agendas coming up just because of activity going on. So one thing that's going to be coming to you, I wanted to bring to your attention is that we'll probably bring forward at some point in the very near future, a potential amendment, another amendment to the comp plan to the MCD Pert area that we discussed in a work session a few months back, so.
To what?
To the MCD, the area around MCD that was identified as a Pert.
Oh, MCD, okay.
Yeah, so we had a
Sorry, your mic's a little muffled, there's
I'm sorry, could be my
He's getting weak at this weather.
We were all falling asleep.
So they, you, we had a work session on that potential expansion and then we held a community meeting on that potential expansion. And so at this point, I think it's time to bring before the commission, of course, some discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Mr. Young, did you have anything?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn until next month.
There's a motion on the floor, seconded by the chair, that we adjourn until our July twenty-fifth meeting at six thirty P. M. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The nays, nays. Motion carried. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.